To order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of Tuesday, August 15th, 2017. Please stand for the Fledgled Allegiance. Counselor Perry?
President.
Counselor LeBeau?
Here.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Hilton?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras?
Present.
Counselor Edwards is absent. Thank you. Business brought before the council: Consent Agenda. CA 1A: Approval of Regular Session Meeting Minutes of July 10th, 2017. No Executive Session. Counselor DiMedeiras abstained, absent. CA 1B: Approval of Regular Session Meeting Minutes of July 24th, 2017. No Executive Session. 1C: Approval of Special Meeting/Workshop of July 31st, 2017. No Executive Session. Counselors DiMedeiras and Hilton abstained, absent. CA 2: Receipt of Minutes from the following Boards and Commissions. A: Casino Subcommittee Meeting of July 12th, 2017. B: Conservation Commission. C: Planning Board of Appeals. D: Zoning Board of Review. CA 3: Correspondence Received and File. 3A: Evan Smith, Discover Newport Regarding Tiverton Board Appointee, referred to the Town Administrator. CA 4: Approval of Tax Assessor Abatements. CA 5: Town Administrator, July Police and Fire Overtime Report. CA 6: Susan Gill, Planning Board AO Activity Report for July 2017. CA 7: Town Administrator/Treasurer Reporting of Year-End Transfers for Various Accounts to Balance Fiscal Year 2017 Year-End Budget Previously Approved by Council. CA 8: Michael Rodrick, Request Permission to Hold Courtney Rodrick Run-for-Recovery Road Race Event, July 21st, 2018, with Rain Date of July 22nd, 2018. And that's a request for fiscal year 2018. CA 9: Narragansett Bay Wheelman, Providence, Rhode Island, Request Permission to Hold 46th Annual TFCE Bike Ride on Sunday, September 10th, 2017. Police Chief Recommendation. CA 10: Town Administrator, Authorization to Accept Gift from Rhode Island Department of Transportation of Certain Unused Dock Floats and Railings on Riverside Drive. CA 11: Town Administrator Letter to Congressional Delegation, General Assembly Members, and the Governor Regarding State CDBG Changes. Administrator's Response. CA 12: Solicitor, Approval of Agreement with Fourleaf Inc. of Pleasanton, California, and the Town of Tiverton for Twin River-Tiberton Construction Plan Review and Building Code Inspection Services. CA 13: Denise Charette, Monthly Budget to Actual Summary Report Submitted to Department of Revenue. CA 14: Town Administrator, Confirmation of Agreement of Existing Services with Steer Engineering Consultants. CA 15: Town Administrator, Department Monthly Reports for July. CA 16: Council President Shabbat, Approval to Authorize Town Clerk to Advertise for Vacancy on the Budget Committee. Are there any requests from the council to remove any of the items in the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
CA 10.
Are there any others?
Madam President.
Ms. Hilton?
CA 8 and CA 9.
CA 8 and CA 9. Any others? Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. And not CA 8, 9, or 10.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second all those in favor? Unanimous. CA 8? Ms. Hilton?
I have one question in my packet. CA 9, it references the Police Chief Recommendation, but I don't see it attached.
It's not attached.
But my other sort of... Okay. Well, there's a signature page, so it's not a recommendation, it's just a signature page.
Yeah.
And my question was really a quick one for the solicitor. We don't, and it's fine with me, but we don't need a public hearing for these?
No, a public hearing isn't required.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Do I have a motion to approve CA 8 and CA 9?
Madam President, can you speak to that one for a moment, please?
Yes. Chief Boyd?
I believe it's in Narragansett Bay Wheelman. The chief and I had spoken about this last year. I didn't know that this was coming up on here until I saw this on the agenda. We really need to stress upon these people. Last year, we had them delaying emergency responses for medical, and we had a structure fire that the bicycles would not pull over, and delayed response to several emergency calls. So I really need it stressed upon these people. They're riding three or four abreast down the road and delaying response. It's placing lives at risk, so if they're gonna ride, they need to yield to emergency vehicles.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, do you see that that is communicated?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept CA 8 and CA 9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. CA 10, Mr. LeBeau?
The docks down on Riverside Drive, just wondering if somebody took a look at them to make sure the state's not donating us a pile of crap. So that we have to get rid of, just to make sure that they're still in good shape because they're old floats, and they've been sitting out weathered for a long time. We don't want to take them from the state and then have to bring them to the landfill when they can do it.
Madam President, yes. Bill Anderson went down to look at them, both from a condition point of view and also if he can move them himself, and then where would we store them? So, yes.
So they're in good shape, and we have the ability to move them?
Yes. In fact, I happened to be down there for another reason today, and I was looking at them, and they seem to be in pretty good shape. They're actually, the materials, the decking is actually tracks, it's not wood.
Perfect. Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve CA 10? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Open public forums, announcements, comments, questions, presentations. We have one sign up. Raymond E. Johnson, 691 Brayton Road. Seeing that it's on the agenda, do you wish to speak now, or when it comes up as?
I'll wait for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Public hearings, advertise public hearings. One: Approval of Proposed Amendments to Fee Resolution Continued from July 24th, 2017. Proposed Planning Board Fees and Proposed Planning Board Engineer Review Escrow.
Hi. Good evening.
Ms. Gill?
Yeah. So you should have in your packets a complete preview of how we came to the fees and esc... Well, not the escrows, but the fees that we did. So it has the current year, and then what were proposed, what we voted on and approved for next year. If there's any questions. And then the only thing that's still outstanding is the soil erosion sediment control that's on the second page. I had pulled off a couple from websites, given them to Bill Anderson, asked him if he could review and come up with it, because it seems like they're fairly complicated formulas that the other towns have used to determine how they price that out. So if we can revisit that after we've had a chance to review it, we can just review it at the planning board, come back to you, or however you want to proceed with that. And then the next, well, I don't know, it's the next, the second page is the engineer, the consultant engineer escrow fees. So the first one is the ones that are existing, the 2017-18 column are what we were proposing for adjustments for this year. And then I don't know if the council would consider the ones that I have in the recommendation column. It's just that we found that we were, I guess, under, you know, I guess, underestimating maybe what we needed to have for like major land developments, the larger projects, to put up as an escrow for our inspections and reviews. I don't know if you have any questions about the backup materials? I know it's a lot of information. Basically, what I did was researched other towns that have comparable-sized populations. And as you can see, there's a lot of different variables, there's a lot of different ways that they come up with their fees. What we attempted to do is kind of hit the middle ground with our fees. Some things we were kind of in the ballpark, some things we were underpriced, some things we were way overestimating. The biggest one was the major subdivision, the one that's 550 per lot or unit. And I think on the last, if it's the last page or the second to last page in your packet that has the... Let's see, what's it called? Oh, it's the Fee Revenue Examples. That shows you basically what I did was I took the numbers that they use in their town and plugged them into three different scenarios for a minor subdivision and two different major subdivisions, one with 10 units and one with 20 units, and then plugged in the numbers that they currently have and what we have, just so you could see what kind of range we're working with. And that's how I was able to look at it and kind of figure if we were, you know, our fees were reasonable and comparable to what other communities of our size are charging.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question. So what is it that you need from us tonight? Because we're just getting this thrown at us, so...
Oh, well, the 2017-18. Those columns, those are the ones that the planning board has reviewed and voted on.
Okay. The one in the front?
Right. Well, that one and for the escrow. And then the only other thing is if you were willing to consider was the increase on the escrows. That was the third column that I had for the major land development.
Yes. Okay.
All right. That one.
But this is all the backup for those first two, those pages, right?
Right. Yeah. That was the backup. That was how we kind of arrived at the numbers that we came up with and how we broke them into, like we saw a lot of other communities do the three different stages of development, whereas we had been only doing one stage, you know, one-time fee.
Yes.
So it seemed like that it was time to kind of come up with that. So, yeah, the recommendation for the escrow, the larger ones, would be the ones then additionally that we were asking if you would consider adjusting upward.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
For the soil erosion sediment control, there are no fees at this time?
Right. That's the one that we're finding that we're having to do a lot of that now, and the ones that fall on DPW to do, as well as that some communities do charge for that. We just haven't had that in our budget. So I did find two communities online. One of them was Woonsocket, I don't remember what the other one was. And I'd given that information to Bill Anderson, but he's been extremely busy since our last meeting, and he hasn't had a chance to review them and do that. But there's a lot of variables to consider, whether it's, some of them were by how many units, or, you know, in a subdivision, or some of them were based on acreage. So I just, we need to kind of work that one out yet. But I think it would probably behoove us considering how much time that he has to put into that when we review them. I mean, they have to review plans, they have to review the site, and usually they have to write reports. So it seemed like that was something that we should, and other towns have a fee established for that service, so we wanted to incorporate that, but that came after we'd already approved our fees here.
Any comments from the town administrator on the soil erosion sediment control?
Well, just that for the larger projects, what we're trying to do is have that work delegated to our town, the contract that you just approved with steer engineering, which really been in place for several years. But on the smaller ones, where Bill can do those, the engineer can do those, it would be good to have a fee structure at some point. So I think this creates the structure for it, and then we can go back and make a proposal to you sooner than later.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
Can we put this off for a couple of weeks so we can get a better look at it? Because this is the first, I've been busy in the last couple of days, I didn't get a really good look at all these fees and where there's money and who's paying this money. If you're looking for a vote tonight, if we could just vote on this in a couple of weeks, so I could just get a look and see who is getting charged these fees if it's, you know, a lot of these fees are being charged for people that we already pay. And I just don't quite, I don't quite get why we got to raise our fees because other towns do it. I'd just like to look at it. Maybe they're needed, if they are needed, and I would like to get a better look at it. If it's possible. If you guys want to vote on it, that's up to you.
Ms. McGreevy, do you have the soil erosion sediment, would that have to go before the planning board?
We could do it either way. I mean, we can, it can come back to the planning board, and we could review it and then make a recommendation, or, you know, Bill Anderson and I could review it and present it to the council, however you would like to proceed with that. I don't know if there's going to be more fees presented later in, I guess, in the season, if we could present it then. We just haven't had a meeting lately.
Yeah. I think that the intent there was that there will be other fees that we'll continue to review, especially as we go into budget season, that have nothing to do with this, but then we would clean up on this one. So that one, I think we can take care of when we have the information, whether we have it in two weeks or not, is one question. But that's not what Counselor LeBeau was looking at. He's wanting to delay the whole thing.
So, Madam President.
So, Ms. Ryan?
So if we approved it tonight, when would the fees start?
Effective?
Immediately.
It'd be effective?
Immediately?
Now.
Which would be good.
That would be good. That would be helpful. I mean, we're not raising, I mean, in some cases, we're lowering them for like major land developments. They're actually lowering them because they're the ones that are the most out of line with any other community significantly. Both two major projects have been, and there's been complaints by developers because of it, so we were trying to get those in particular back more in line with what other communities are charging.
Ms. Hilton?
Susan, do you have a plan? If these fees are adopted, do you have a plan for the projects that are in process? In other words, will they stay with the old fee structure till they finish?
Right.
Or do you like that?
Right. Anything that's currently active would stay as such because they pay, like for any major development, they pay upfront for basically the whole process. So it'd be anything coming, going forward, would then pay for just, you know, the application that's proposed, whether it's master preliminary or final. Yeah. It wouldn't be retroactive.
Is this a public hearing? This is a public hearing?
Okay.
Any more questions?
Any more questions from the council?
Did you say it is a public hearing?
It is a public hearing.
So we can hear from the public now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Anyone in the public wishes to speak on this agenda item? You can come up to the podium. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item? There are two things. If we continue this, we would have to really continue the public hearing, because if it's introducing new fees for soil erosion sediment control, then we would have to continue the public hearing. Will you have, Mr. Administrator, Ms. McGreevy, would you have that information for the next council meeting?
I can't guarantee that.
Generally speaking, we have, these fees are reviewed once a year, and we try and keep to that. And this year, I think we've gone over fees a few times. Certainly, it's to save on putting out advertisements for the fee changes. So how we, if we have steer engineering, do the soil erosion sediment control, who actually pays for that activity? Is that the town or the developer?
The developer.
It is the developer. Is that just a straight pass-through payment?
That's correct.
Through the town.
And it's based on the hours they put into each report that they have to do as part of it.
Okay. Ms. Hilton?
Madam President, we did see these fees at the last meeting. We just asked for, you know, the clarification table so that we could compare the older fees to the new ones, although we did see these, we have advertised them. I think the planning board's done a great job and a lot of research, and I'm prepared to go forward tonight, and I'm willing to make a motion that we adopt the fees, the new fee schedule as presented, and review the soil sedimentation and erosion control fees when they become available.
Second.
I have, motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. I will close the public hearing on this particular item, just to make sure that that's documented. C: Town Council Sitting as Board of Licensing. Non-advertised licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements. Advertised licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements. C1: Jonathan Bouquet, 2955 Main Road. Approval for Outdoor Special Event Entertainment License for Wedding Reception to take place on Saturday, October 7th, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. 1A: There is a public hearing for the approval of a sound variance, and we have received correspondence from Winemisit Farm Road District with no objection. Is Mr. Bouquet here? Any questions from the council?
Madam President, I...
Ms. Hilton?
I, there is a request, a special event request, to use the Upper Baseball Field Parking Lot for this parking? But I don't, unless I'm missing it, I don't see anything approving that from the Recreation Commission.
Ms. Book? Was there anything that came in from the applicant? Just looked here.
Also, Madam President.
Mr. Perry?
Chief Blakely writes a letter. He has been trying to contact the people about, he has a concern about the safety, pedestrian safety in that area, and he has not heard back from the applicant. I don't know if Chief Blakely is here, maybe he has since this was written, but that might be something we should address.
Mr. Blakely? Chief Blakely? Chief?
Can't hear you.
Yep. It's being cooled down there. Any comments on this wedding reception at 2955 Main Road? You had some concerns about parking?
That would be the normal concerns. The only concern I would have would be parking off the roadway. Seems like it's been addressed.
It has been addressed since you wrote this down.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry to cut you back there.
No problem, Chief.
Madam President.
Ms. DiMedeiras?
The back page looks like they did ask for the, the back page is a Tiverton Recreation Commission Special Event Usage Form. It looked like they did apply to use it, but I don't see anywhere where they was, the Recreation Commission answered back to them. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
That's what it looks like. That's what it looks like, is that they filled out the application, but it's never been either addressed or submitted.
Yeah. Well, I'm wondering if this ever got to the Recreation Commission. Joe, would you know that? I know it's an odd...
They had a meeting last week, I don't recall it was being on their agenda.
Yeah. I'm wondering if they just didn't receive this, or they didn't address it at all.
Possibly they just admitted it and didn't understand that it actually had to go to the Recreation.
I think possible.
Well, we could make a motion to approve this pending recreation approval, if that's what we wanted. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because I don't see John here.
You could do that.
Okay. I'd like to first open up the public hearing on the sound variance. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the sound variance for the wedding reception, October 7th, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. at 2955 Main Road? Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Last call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? I'd like to close the public hearing on the sound variance. Do we have a motion to approve this special event entertainment license with the restriction of obtaining Recreation Department approval for the use of the Tom Farm Upper Baseball Field Parking Lot?
Madam President, before we go further, if they don't approve it, we're going to put these guys, this Jonathan Bouquet and whoever the other, his wife is going to be, they're going to have problems if this is not approved. So we need, I think maybe we should put this one off until, he's got plenty of time, he's got until October 7th. Because if we say until this or that, and nobody, and we drop the ball, like happens quite often around here, and not get a hold of him, or something doesn't happen, we could screw up this whole guy's wedding.
I'm sure that the town clerk can follow up with the, and the town administrator can follow up with the Recreation Committee.
And they'll let him know if it's not approved? You say, okay.
Ms. Hilton?
Madam President, I a little bit agree with Counselor LeBeau here. Recreation has had a little bit of difficulty having meetings lately. They've had some quorum issues, and a couple of the members are really busy. And it might be, it might be better to contact the applicant and make sure that they understand this. I mean, I have no idea if the Recreation Commission usually lets anybody use their fields for wedding parking. I mean, I don't even know if that's an odd request or not, but it is possible, given their quorum issues and their schedule lately, that this actually could fall through the cracks a little bit. So maybe we should make a concerted effort to contact the applicant and contact Recreation before we approve it and find out that there isn't actually a Recreation Commission meeting they can get to in time, or Recreation says, no, you can't do that. I would hate to see somebody's wedding be all gummed up, too.
The applicant's parents live on my street. I'm going to knock on their door on my way home, and I'm going to let them know.
I wouldn't do that.
Oh, yeah. They, yeah. They already hate me already.
Oh, my God. They'll call the police.
Midnight won't bother them. And I'm going to let them know to get this stuff straightened out.
Madam President, the next recreation meeting is scheduled for September the 14th.
Well, if you, Madam President, they're asking to use...
When at time?
I'm sorry.
Ms. DiMedeiras?
They're asking to use the parking lot, not actually the field. So I don't, I don't know how everybody feels about this, but I don't think they'll have an objection using the parking lot. But we can approve this without their approval anyway.
I'm just letting you know.
Right. Am I correct, Peter?
So you couldn't approve the use of the parking lot without getting a recommendation from them first? You could always, you could vote to approve it, then send it to recommendation on the issue of the parking, and if they don't grant the parking, you could allow it to go forward with the street parking, unless that's a concern of the chief. But, or you could continue with, had I heard the meeting after the Recreation meeting.
There, Madam President.
Ms. Hilton?
There is a process, though, isn't there, where if Recreation can't get a quorum and can't meet, that we can approve the use of the facility, I think. I seem to remember that Madam Clerk has told us in the past, there is a way to do that. If, just because if Recreation isn't meeting until September 14th, and this wedding is October 7th, I mean, that's pretty close there, if they have to make alternative arrangements. So...
So ultimately... So ultimately, the Recreation makes a recommendation to the council for the use of the property, and that's what's required under the statute. If they can't get a quorum, the council has ultimate authority to grant the use of the town land, any town land.
And when do we meet? September?
11th.
11th. September 11th.
September 11th.
We meet on 11th.
But if we approve it per their approval and they approve it, then we don't have to meet on this subject again. You know what I'm saying? But, and also, they are meeting Sept- the only thing that I think we could do is maybe call John Cudero, maybe having the administrator call the chairman, reach out to him and see if there would be problems, because John would probably have some feel on if he's allowed this before, or if they discussed not ever doing this. So we could give him some, so John could give us some idea of whether or not this would be approved. Does that sound?
That makes sense, that makes sense. And if not, it can come back to the council and you may consider it.
So, I think due to the time constraint, I'd like to move this along. As I stated to begin with, do I have a motion to approve the special event entertainment license for wedding reception to take place on October 7th from 5:00 to 11:00, subject to Recreation Committee recommendation of approval to using the town farm Upper Baseball Field parking lot?
I do.
There you go, a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Now I need a motion for the sound variance.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. C2, Victoria Layton and James Rayner, 531 Pankatess Neck Road, I can never pronounce that correctly.
Pankatess.
Pankatess. Approval for special event outdoor entertainment license for wedding reception to take place on Saturday, August 26th, 2017, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. We have a public hearing for approval of a sound variance and we have received correspondence from Jonathan French regarding parking, which he supports the event with parking in his neighborhood. I'd like to open up the public hearing on the sound variance. Anyone wishing to speak on this wedding reception? Chief? Blakely?
The, many of the sound variances, when I contact these people and we mention the 10 o'clock ordinance, many of them say they're going to shut off prior to that time around 10 o'clock anyhow, just to advise you of that.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Last call, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Hearing, no further comments. We will close the public hearing on this item. Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan?
Under liquor license needed, it looks like it says uncertain. Is that right? Yeah, it's handwritten. Where are you reading that? It looks like uncertain. Which is a funny kind of thing, because it was like, well, I don't know. But it would be, isn't that what it says?
Are they here? Oh, there's Victoria right there. I think you're Victoria, right.
So, yes, I just didn't know at the time whether I needed it or not, but I have, the company I've hired has a license and all the appropriate-
And then you don't need it then, and that can-
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion? For the special event outdoor entertainment license for wedding reception to take place on Saturdays, August 26th, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 531-
Pankatess Neck Road.
What is it? Pankatess? Neck Road.
Or just Neck Road.
Neck Road, I like that. That one, there's only two town names that I can't get, two roads, I just cannot pronounce them. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Good luck.
A motion to approve sound variance for said wedding reception. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. We've been having a lot of weddings in town.
I know.
This is, it's good.
It's the number one cause of divorce. Marriage.
Moving on, D, appointments and resignations. Appointments, one, Library Board of Trustees, one, an unexpired term to 10/15/2018, continued from the 7/24/17 meeting. We interviewed two applicants, Melinda Foley Marcello, 3991 Main Road, and Carol Herman, 1106 Main Road, and we have also received a recommendation from the Library Board of Trustees Chair, Gregory Jones. Any comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President-
Ms. Hilton?
While they were both great applicants, I will defer to the recommendation of the Library Board President Greg Jones in that I think they know best what skills will help them. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Carol Herman to the Library Board of Trustees.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck, Carol. Ms. Herman?
She's right there.
I know she's there. Planning Board, one vacancy, three-year term to 7/15/2020. We have an applicant, David Perry, 78 Bramble Way, seeking new appointment.
Madam President, we also received another request to be appointed to that board today.
Is Mr. Perry here?
Madam President, he called me earlier, said he had an emergency, he would not be able to make it tonight.
Okay, we'll continue this to next meeting.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion for that? D, unfinished business, Town Administrator for the discussion input on council goals. Mr. McGreevy?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is the summary of the workshop session we held a couple of weeks ago that most of you were at, except for Councilwoman DiMaderas and Hilton. So what I wanted to do is give you all an opportunity to look at this, you received this maybe a week or so ago. And what I propose is, if there's any comments that anyone has now to add to this, whether in the preamble, challenges facing the town, or the council's vision, or guiding principles, or on the goals themselves, discuss them, or I'll take notes. Certainly, if you want to send me anything between now and, say, for the next week, what I'd like to do is then consolidate these goals, flesh them out a little bit so they're structured and they have some meat behind them, and then present them as one or more goals for your individual vote at the August 28th meeting.
Any comments from the council? I'd like to express my appreciation for your facilitation of the workshop-
You're very welcome.
...and to documenting this. That was great. All right, we'll continue this to the August 28th meeting. If you have any other comments or recommendations, you can get that to the town administrator. F, financial business, one, Councilor DiMaderas, authorization to transfer 3,500 from Council contingency number 1020-6890 to A, Samaritan's account 6250-7750 for 500. B, East Bay Action account, 6250-7756, 2,500. C, Parents for Teachers account, 6250-7772, 500, for a total of 3,500. Councilor DiMaderas?
As most of you will recall, at the end of the budget season last year, many people were upset that these accounts were taken away. And I did agree with it, but at that time, I felt that we should accept the Budget Committee's recommendation budget, and I did mention that our council contingency, the Budget Committee gave us 15,000, more than what we asked for. We asked for 25,000, we got 40. And I did make a promise to the people in front of me that if, when the time comes, that I would ask the council to transfer this money back into these items, because I do feel that these are important items. I'm just asking the council to consider this. Keep in mind, the East Bay Action account, they did request $5,000. I was a little hesitant to take that much from the council contingency, so I felt that 2,500 would at least show them that we feel their agency does count and they do deserve Tivoli's support.
Any comments from the council? Any comments from the town administrator?
I guess two considerations I would offer. One is, it's early in the year as far as potential contingencies that could come up that, you know, would require us to draw upon these funds. And secondly, I guess, the concern or the perception that if the contingency fund is used for readdressing budget issues that were not resolved during the budget session as opposed to true contingencies, you might have a problem in the future where they'll just cut the contingency fund. So if, what I would recommend to you is that if you choose to fund these line items, instruct me to find somewhere else in the budget to find the money for it as opposed to from the contingency fund, and leave that fund as available as long as possible for any emergency that we just can't anticipate.
Madam President-
Councilor DiMaderas?
I think whoever's been here for a while realizes that this council contingency fund is usually used for things that we felt we need. Last year, the council contingency fund was used for the trash, which was cut by the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee was fully aware that we did that last year and did not. I was at every Budget Committee meeting during the discussion with the contingency. They realized that our budget was tight and they felt that they should give us a little extra in case we needed to move things around. And that was stated as such, and Trish Hilton was there, too. They felt that 25,000, because of the way that we have been using it when we need to, they gave us 15. I am just throwing this out there because I made a promise to the community. I certainly won't be offended if people don't vote for it, but I'm doing this because I did make that promise.
Madam Pres-
Go ahead. Mr. LeBeau?
The East Bay Action for 2,500, what do they do with that money?
That is, all right, that is the agency that funds the, do you know, the building down on Stafford Road that runs a food bank, they run a daycare, they also do a lot-
So they help people?
They also do a lot of-
Okay, they can have it.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I would win you over by saying that.
Ms. Hilton?
Madam President, and I realize that our town administrator was not on board at the time, but the night of the Budget Committee meeting when these, these accounts came up, both Councilor DiMaderas and I had some very long, lengthy, and sometimes pointed discussions with some members of the Budget Committee about our support for these organizations. And both of us tried to point out, both from a, you know, moral and compassionate point of view, why it's important to support these organizations, as well as frankly, as an economic, because they do provide support and services, and in some cases, there is an economic benefit, because they're able to handle things that otherwise may fall in the lap of the Police Department or the Fire Department. At a certain point in the Budget Committee discussions, the current Budget Committee Chairman, Cecil Leonard, pointed out to some of his members, who were getting quite animated about this, that in fact, maybe they should get on with the voting and table this discussion because fundamentally, that the council, especially for small amounts like this, had a contingency fund, and if they didn't agree with the Budget Committee's opinion, that we could address this through our contingency fund. So that was all sort of well-known at the Budget Committee meetings. Councilor Maderas made a commitment that she would, you know, work to restore funding to these organizations. I happen to agree, and I don't, you know, $3,500 out of the contingency fund for what these organizations bring to the town and what they, what they do for the residents, I think is an easy thing for me to support. But this discussion did in fact come up in front of the Budget Committee.
Madam President?
Ms. Ryan?
Just to say about whether it's early or late in the, in the season, I don't even know anymore if I was at the Budget Committee meeting or I just watched it on TV. But, but it was, but it was stressed that we would do it early on in the, as soon as the budget, so that just answers your other question. So that was addressed before, and so that, just to allay any fear you have on that, that that was, it was just like addressed, and I think people were very concerned about it, so that was all.
Madam President, can I make a motion to give up this money?
I'll make the money.
To transfer. Denise, you want to do it, because I don't know all these numbers.
All right, I make them up. Would you like me to make the motion to actually name them all?
Just before we get to that, I know we have a new town administrator, and the way I look at the budget is, the town administrator is the keeper of the budget. And I would prefer that these requests come through the town administrator so that he can evaluate it, and if there are other funds that he can support these efforts, I'd rather it come from him rather than from us.
Madam President, Mr. McGreevy will tell you that we did have a discussion on this. I did go to his office and tell him what I was planning on doing.
I'm sure you did. Again, it's just my opinion that the budgetary item should come through the town administrator as he's the keeper of the budget. On that note, you can certainly proceed with a motion.
I might, I'd like to make a motion to transfer 3,500 from the council contingency number 1020-6890 to the Samaritan account, number 6250-7750, to the sum of $500. The East Bay Action account, 6250-7756, 2,500, and Parents for Teachers Association, 6250-772, for $500, for a total of 3,500.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in-
Before you-
Any further discussion?
All right.
Mr. LeBeau?
I'm still new, I forget how this stuff works. Yes, so what you were saying about letting the town administrator do it in the future, now that I know how things work, that would be, if that's what the recommendation is? So that's just what I wanted to say, that's it. All right.
Right, and just so I'm clear, I will vote against this motion, not that I'm against giving money to this, these organizations, it's I am voting against it as far as a process, objection to the process. I believe it's the town administrator's job to present those items to the town council and for us to vote on it. So motion's been made in second. All those in phase-
Madam President?
Yeah, I got to say something.
Ms. Hilton?
I fully respect your opinion on that, but as a point of policy, council policy, I think maybe this should be something that we should discuss in the future- I think maybe this should be something that we should discuss in the future because ultimately the council does make policy. And so, I do believe that, you know, there seems to be some disagreement as to exactly what the policy is, and maybe this is something, not tonight, but in the future, we should have a discussion about.
Ms. DiMaderis?
It's okay.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed.
Thank you.
Motion passes. G, new business. G1, Robert Coulter, request for support and funds to video charter review commission meetings. Mr. Coulter?
Good evening, Council President and councilors. Here today, acting as the Chair of the newly-installed Charter Review Commission, which as you know is an independent body but has no budget. And we've had two meetings. We have one coming up and we're attempting to synchronize those meetings so that they're opposite of yours, so that all of you can attend, and we hope that you do. At our first meeting, a topic came up on whether there is the possibility of videotaping those meetings. There was some interest in that from some of the commissioners as well as some members of the public. And so, I'm here just basically to try to get feedback from that. I wouldn't say it's even a formal request, because frankly, I don't know what the budget support is. And I also don't recall what some of the other commissions, if they've been videotaped. From prior experience, I think I've seen some videos, and a lot of times, we've had some really high-quality videos from members of the public. So, that's why I'm here, just to bring it up for discussion and see if it's something we could explore.
Any questions?
Madam President.
Councilor DiMaderis?
I feel it's really important, Rob, that this gets publicized and that people are able to watch it from home, because a lot of people can't make it to the meetings. I think this is like one of the most important committees that we've had in a long time. And this is everyone's future, and I think that people should hear about what's going on. And there will also be several public hearings where if they're more knowledgeable, they will come. Just as a side, I checked with the town clerk. She said she would give about, it would probably cost you about $2,000, maybe a little more, but she thought that $2,000 would probably do. But I, as a single-town council, definitely support these being televised.
That was $2,000 for, we'd expect probably 26 to 30 meetings, most likely.
She said you might need more, but she would go, she said, well, she actually said $2,000 to $2,500, I'm being conservative. But I mean, $2,500 would be close, and if you needed any more, you could certainly come back to us. But she thought it would be right around that amount.
Would this be coming out of the town clerk's budget?
No, I don't think so, I don't know. She didn't suggest that, Tony. Yeah, she just said that that's what she felt it would cost.
Mr. McGreevy?
Yeah, I think if you choose to do this, I think what we'll do is sit down, look at the budget and see where we can find it. If I may add, though, one of the conversations that Mr. Coulter and I had was narrowing down what we think this amount would be. There might be some difficulty with our current provider doing this, just on scheduling, and that we may have to look at some other options, which changes the cost dynamic. We know what our current provider costs, but someone else might cost different.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Coulter, when do you meet? Do you have a schedule all set? Is it once a month, twice a month?
We're attempting to meet on the first and third Mondays, because you meet on the second and fourth Mondays, with some exceptions. We crisscrossed this week, but we're going to try to get on that schedule. We're attempting to meet at the library when possible, but otherwise, we would be here Monday nights, 7:00 p.m. So, with your pleasure, what I would do is I'd go back and report back to the commission and take this feedback. And with your permission, I continue to work with Mr. McGreevy. And of course, we'll reach out to Nancy as well. And if the commission wants to turn this into a formal request, then we'll do that. Okay? Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
G2, Councilor Hilton, clarification and possible vote on amendment to council policy regarding board and commission appointments. Ms. Hilton?
Thank you. So, we have this board and commission policy statement, which I don't think is particularly friendly or helpful in getting more volunteers to take open spots on boards and commissions, particularly around the appointment process. There's a schedule in here of when we should be appointing folks. There are some advertising requirements that we seem to mostly follow, but we don't always follow exactly as they're listed. And we don't always adhere and seem to vary in our adherence to the policy of appointing folks the same night as their interviews versus not. And sometimes we waive that requirement and sometimes we don't. And in some cases, if you, you know, look back at the Economic Development Committee appointments, from the time of the first application until we finally appointed somebody, it was sort of more than two months. And I think that, you know, in some cases, potential volunteers feel a little bit like when they come and they apply and then they don't hear for a long period of time, that we're not interested in their service or we're looking for somebody better. And that doesn't send a very good message. I also think it's unclear as to when we waive the policy of appointing the night of interview versus when we don't. There are some other things in here that we don't seem to check on, and I'm not really sure even applicable about people not serving more than, you know, I think it's six years. So, and the advertising piece, you know, if we're trying to get new people in, the advertising says that we'll advertise it once in the Secana Times. And truth be told, that the younger generation rarely looks at the little advertisements in the legal public notices in the Secana Times, if they even read the newspaper. And we're supposed to post it on the town website, the openings, which we do sometimes, but occasionally we don't. And frankly, I think we're missing a huge opportunity by not having some sort of social media presence on Facebook, not a page for comments or that we're going to get into discussion of things, but just a page to post the same sort of things that we put on the homepage of the website, so that people who are in the social media world can follow them and hear about these things. So, I'm not necessarily suggesting we take a vote on this tonight, but I'm thinking this policy maybe needs a little bit of an overhaul and some streamlining. And we ought to come up with one plan and stick with it and not vary the rules on a meeting-by-meeting basis. And hopefully, that will attract more people to come forward and volunteer, that the interview process won't seem so intimidating, that people will understand when they interview, when we'll make a decision. And so, I'm suggesting this could use a bit of an overhaul. I'm willing to work on it. If there's another counselor or two that wants to participate in taking some edits on that, I'd be happy for the help. But that's really what I'd like to do.
I'll volunteer to help.
And certainly, the policy that's attached to this agenda item does not include the updates that were approved at the August 24, 2015 meeting. So, there are updates that definitely are needed to this, especially for that agenda item that was already passed. Certainly, you can-
Madam President, the one thing I'd like to see is that when we advertise, we put a deadline, and then we go two meetings, and then we appoint somebody, rather than just continue, continue, continue. Because then people feel like, you know, they're being slighted because they're not good enough. And I just think we should have some kind of policy in place to do that.
And certainly-
Like we do for a job. We have a deadline you've got to apply by, and then we interview, and then by the second council meeting, we appoint.
I'm sure that that was the intention, and in some cases, we just didn't get applicants until after the cutoff date. And certainly, you'd have to talk to our town clerk to review the process of advertisement, because she's, her office is the one that puts those advertisements in the paper. Certainly, is there any motion that we need to make on this? If it's just a matter of, are they going to take the item and make amendments and then come back to the council with changes?
No, unless you want to do it as a formal subcommittee, but if you're just going to propose recommendations, it doesn't really need to hatch.
Thank you. Very good.
Okay, in that case, we'll add Joe, we don't have a forum, if we're three, we're good.
Yes.
Very good. Next item, G3, town administrator, reorganization of planning zoning positions. 3A, permission to post advertise for full-time land use clerk. And 3B, permission to advertise IRP for on-call planning and grant writing consulting services. Ms. McGreevy?
Thank you. So, as you're all aware, we haven't had a planner for several months. And we advertised maybe a month ago for that, interviewed, and we got two applicants. And one was very good, and could very well have hired her, but her time commitments, the amount that we were offering, she wasn't willing to take the job on a full-time basis. But that allowed us to, and us being the building official and Sue Gill, who's acting as AO, from the planning board, to step back and say, okay, what do we really need here based on the amount of funding that we have? And other input from councilors as well, as ideas for how to man the building and planning support offices. And what the realization that I came to is, it's really a top-down and a bottom-up problem. The top-down problem is lack of management at the planning board level. We haven't had one since the last planner left. And in the building office, it's a dual office. It's building official and code enforcement. But there's also a bottom-up problem too. I believe at some point in the past, you had a planning clerk. That position was eliminated. And we just recently posted, based on what was in the budget, for a part-time land use clerk that would be used between the two offices. What we found, not so much that the candidate was unqualified for it, we only got one candidate, but it just wasn't going to, was in effect a half measure. It just wasn't going to be able to fulfill the need administratively for the planning board or the building office, for somebody who's in here for about 19, 20 hours, to be able to do what those two offices needed. So, what I'm recommending is that we go for a full-time land use clerk that would be shared between the two offices, to allow us to address the administrative issues that are just building up. And they really, with the, you know, a volunteer in the planning office and one clerk in the land use office, the building office, isn't keeping up with the workload. And I don't think that they can physically keep up with the workload just because of the type of work that has to be done between the two. So, there's approximately $90,000 in salary money that is currently in the budget between a stipend for the AO, the planning board AO, the salary for the planner, a part-time land use clerk, and a part-time assistant inspector for the building official. What I'd like to do is start, and this is really the beginning of the first part of reorganization here. I think the ultimate vision is to have a planner at some point and a enhanced code enforcement office, because a lot of our complaints and a lot of the activity and certainly a lot of the action that I see in the town is lack of code enforcement. But the first thing that I know that we need is some administrative support for these two offices. So, this isn't the last piece of this puzzle, but it is certainly a first piece and a key piece that we can get in place. Estimate based on a standard salary for a clerk, it'd probably be about $30,000 to $35,000 for what we'd be asking for, for that land use clerk piece.
Madam President.
Councilor DiMaderis?
Does that include benefits? Because this would be a benefited position.
This would be a benefit position, and that $35,000 doesn't include benefits.
It doesn't include benefits.
We have to calculate that out.
Usually, we get an impact study with new positions, which I didn't see, I know you're explaining it, but the benefits will add a lot to that price. Did you talk with the union about adding a full-time position to ASME?
They are aware of it, and they will advertise for this position. They'll have the right to advertise prior to us.
All right, because it is a union position that you're asking for.
Now, just a note, I mean, we won't hire off of this action. If you approve advertising, we will get whatever we get for applicants, we'll interview, and then come back with a recommendation of whether we should hire or not.
I just would have-
The impact statement would be with that.
Yeah, I would have a problem voting for this without a true impact statement, where I see what the benefits would cost by putting on another full-time position to the budget. Because this was a long deliberation between the council and the town administrator and the building official and the planner, and it was decided to put these half-time positions on. And one of the reasons why was because it's so costly to add benefited positions on. So, I would have a problem voting for this without seeing the true impact.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
This position that you're speaking of, is it going to be, if we go in-house with this, if the union gets involved, unless we create a new position, AO planner, or whatever, we need to have a qualified person in there, not just somebody from the union who's had seniority, who's been, I don't want to insult nobody, working at the dump, and they want to come in here, oh, I have seniority, now I'm going to go work in there. So, if we're going to do this, we need to get professional people in here, and the union has to be on board with it. We just can't do a shift from whatever to whatever. We need to hire as a brand-new position.
So, if it was a, it would be a union position, it would have to be bid out under the union contract?
Which would be in-house first, and then go to the outside if no one applies.
But can we make it a qualified position with some kind of a degree or something?
Any full-time planner position falls under the-
The ASME contract.
So, we're going to be same old, same old again? You're going to get the guy from-
Not necessarily, because, I mean, attached to this is a job description for this that is different than other clerks that we have in the building. Now, they do have the right to apply for it, and if they are qualified and they can meet these qualifications listed-
Right, and that's all I'm saying. We need somebody that's going to meet the qualifications of the job, not somebody who just is tired of working somewhere else.
Also, something that we have tried now with, you know, we hired another clerk down in the treasurer's office and a part-time clerk over at the fire department.
We didn't know that. That hasn't been communicated. I didn't know that we hired those two people.
We posted, I mean, they were-
Okay, I just didn't know that we had hired those people.
Well, actually, I'm not 100% sure we actually made the hires, but they are close to hiring. But as part of the hiring process, what we did was administer a practical test in each case to make sure that they were capable of what was in here, and it wasn't just based on the interview.
And if we don't have somebody in-house, we'll be free to go outhouse and find somebody for the job.
That's true.
Well, we could use an outhouse intervention. We flushed once.
Mr. LeBeau, the-
I'm sorry.
The process is, they would, it goes out to bid through the union first, and then if there's no applicant from within the union, then it goes out for advertisement.
Right.
And then it goes through that process.
I just want to make sure we have the qualified person in the office that can do the job, so we're not just having somebody sitting there all day and we have the same problems we have. That's it.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, Madam President, my question to Paul is, is this person going to be cross-trained so that when Jody's on vacation or Neil's out, they'll be able to do what those people do? Because we hear a lot of complaints about, they come here and the office is closed because somebody's on vacation and they can't get things done? Is that going to be one of the recommendations that we're going to do?
Well, the job description is a joint, we're calling it land use as opposed to building clerk or planning clerk. But I don't think, the person wouldn't be trained to do what the building official does, Neil, but certainly what Jody does and what a planning clerk would have done in the past. That's the cross-training at the clerk level.
So, Madam President, I have a question-
Ms. Ryan?
Paul, so you said, correct me if I'm wrong, the $90,000 was for the AO, the planner, the part-time land use, and the part-time assistant inspector?
Correct.
Okay. So, now you're going to get, now you're looking for- Okay, so now you're gonna get, now you're looking for thirty-five to thirty-eight-
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits, so, you're not gonna get, so that's gonna knock out half of that, ninety thousand?
Probably.
So, and yet, we still need to get an AO and a planner? So how is, how's that gonna work?
That's, and that's the problem we faced, is we did go out to the market for a planner, we got two applicants, one was qualified, but as I say, she has other commitments, and we're constrained by, we don't pay as much as other towns do, and it just so happens, as I've talked to other planners in the state, the market is a little bit dry, because statewide planning has just done a major hiring of several people, and that's taken people off the market. So, we, and I don't know how long that sort of drought will last, of trying to get a planner here, that's, thus the reason for the second item here, is to have the ability to build a bench of consultants, that we can bring in for very specific planning projects.
But you still only have forty-five thousand to do it.
That's correct.
And, and also, you need an AO as well.
That's correct.
Because you can't keep expecting people to volunteer their time all the time, so we still need, we're still stuck here. Yeah, that was-
Are you, are you done?
Yeah, we're stuck. That's it, I'm done.
All right, Ms. Hilton.
You know, a few minutes ago, Mr. McReevey, you mentioned sort of the Budget Committee and where we are, I mean, this, this part-time person was a long discussion amongst the council, and it was a long discussion at the Budget Committee, and I'm still not completely convinced, although I'm well aware of the issues in that office, that a full-time clerk is required. If, depending on who we get in here to be the administrative officer slash sort of planner, or whatever it is, I mean, and to Counselor Ryan's point, the administrative officer's a legal requirement, we have to have one, and we can't keep depending on the goodwill of Susan to do this. We don't, I mean, you and I have had some conversations about some alternatives versus somebody who's a traditional AICP-certified planner, and some of the other positions that exist in the state, but we don't have a feel for really what it's gonna cost for us to get that position, and I feel really strongly, because that position is a legal requirement, we have to fill that position first, and be able to have whatever salary we need to get that position filled, and then, based on the skillset of that person, or the expectations, or how we structure the job, then we'll have a better understanding of how much clerical support we need or don't need. And if, in the long run, we need a full-time person there, well, we do, but we might not, we might be able to do it with, you know, a part-time person, depending on whether or not we create this position, that we've talked about a little bit, that's kind of a hybrid of, you know, maybe some planning and zoning, but we've got to get a competent AO in there, so I'm really reticent to, you know, add on, you know, a full-time clerical position, a potentially forty or more, and be left only with a relatively small amount to try and get someone who can be a competent administrative officer. I think we have to get that position filled first. I'm okay with starting with a part-time clerk, because we discussed that, to just at least take some of the clerical work off of the shoulders of, you know, Susan, who's volunteering right now, as well as, you know, to be there at least when there's nobody in the building official's office, at least to answer questions, take information, hand out forms, I'm okay with that, but I almost wonder if we ought to consider having a council workshop, to throw out the various potential ideas and options of how to structure that office, and do a little research about what we could get in there, you know, for a person, and come up with a plan, and, you know, start with filling, figuring out what to do about the AO job, and then go from there, in terms of the money and the funding for the year.
As a, as a consider-
Ms. McReevey.
As a consider, as a consideration or response to that, to your comments, I think what, as we discussed it between Sue, Neil, and I, that the, the value of the part-time person split between offices, is now we're really talking like a quarter-time person, and I'm really questioning that, at the end of the day, that we won't need, and I don't disagree with the need that we need a planner, or a planner-light, or something in there that can stretch that, that gap of management, but there is an administrative or a clerical gap as well, and at the end of the day, we're gonna end up needing someone at the management level, and somebody at the clerical level, to make this work. It's just that getting the clerical piece is the easier one to do right now, based on what the market can possibly provide us, and defining what that job is, because I think we have a pretty good sense of what the job is. I'd like to move forward on getting that piece in place, and taking the advantage of that, and yes, this probably will cost more than what's in the budget right now. That I'm not, at least, bit naive about, or trying to keep from you all, this will cost us something, but if we want to provide the type of service that potentially a, the type of planning services, building official services, and code enforcement services that we want to provide, it will cost us something.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau.
I have to agree a hundred percent with Ms. Hilton on this, I think we should get together and hire a full-time planner, let's spend that ninety thousand wisely, let's sit down and say, hey, if we throw out the bait for seventy-five thousand dollars, or whatever a really good planner costs, dividend's growing, we need a good planner, so, I mean, I know there's help needed around here, but maybe we can get together and say, X amount will bring us a good planner from somewhere in the state, maybe we should advertise, raise our price, talk about that, get somebody in here that's gonna run, we got stuff coming up, that needs, we're gonna need a good planner. We get a planner AO, we spend the whole ninety grand on them, I hate to overpay more than the chief makes, but we need to do something to get somebody in here, because for thirty thousand dollars, you can make that at McDonald's now. We need, we need somebody good.
And, but, I just would like to recap a little bit, so, there's fifteen thousand in the budget for an administrative officer, there is forty-two thousand in there for a planner, even if you combine those two, that is only fifty-seven thousand dollars for a full-time planner with benefits, fifty-seven thousand.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits. With, we've already gone out for advertisement once already, we've gotten two applicants, and neither situation worked out, okay, so we have only fifty-seven thousand in the budget for a planner. The other, let me just recap here, so, the, the remaining budget to get up to the ninety, that Ms. McReevey is talking about, is there's sixteen thousand in there for a part-time land use clerk, there is also eighteen thousand for a part-time assistant building official, and that totaled, both of those are part-time, those total thirty-four thousand without benefits. So I think if I'm hearing this correctly, Mr. McReevey has reviewed the situation, and he has proposed that to go out for a full-time land use clerk around the thirty-four K, unfortunately, it would have to include benefits, and that would be the part-time land use clerk and the part-time assistant building official.
No, you know, we looked at the, the ability to find the type of person that Neil would need, and he's done research on this, and there's just, I mean, it's just, he's not gonna be able to get that person as an assistant.
The assistant building official?
Yeah.
So you're taking, so your, the plan is to take the eighteen thousand, combine it with the part-time land use clerk, in order to come up with the thirty-four thousand salary for that particular clerk?
Right. Whether it comes, what pot of money, what of those four pots of money it comes out of for the actual transfer, I don't think that's been decided yet, but estimating thirty-four plus, or thirty to thirty-five plus benefits.
And then, the second piece of this is for the planner services, I don't know if we touched on this, what you're proposing is a different approach to the planning and administrative officer?
For the short term. Now, the administrative officer problem is, as many counselors have said, is a problem, and it's not solved by any of these actions, because that has to be an employee, and it has to be, traditionally, you've done it as a planner AO, and it's not something that a clerk can do, so we can't make the clerk the AO. So it is not, this does not solve that particular problem, but what this RFP for creating this, what I would call a master price agreement, or on-call services, we would go out to potentially the person that we just interviewed, as well as others, that have helped in planning, create a bench of people that we can get to, that they, you know, they'd submit their price, their price ranges, they would be available to us, and then when a project, a specific planning issue came up, not management of the office, not, you know, administrative activities, but a specific thing that we needed expertise on, we would request for a quote, come to the council for approval, and then bring that person on for that very specific timeline. That's an interim solution to this problem, and I would, and use the balance of the ninety thousand that isn't being used on the clerk for the rest of the year. Now, bear in mind, it's now two months into the fiscal year, which means one-sixth of the ninety thousand hasn't been spent, so, that, for this fiscal year, we have this sort of bow wave of money that we can use for, for the benefits, we can use for, you know, the on-call services. So again, I'm not suggesting this is a long-term solution, it is fiscal eighteen solution, given the budget that we have.
Mr. Perry.
Yes, Madam President, so you'd be like subcontracting to someone when you had an issue come up.
Right.
You'd be subcontracting. I, the only thing I alluded worried about, if you go with a part-time clerk, is you train that person as a part-time clerk, then it becomes a full-time position, now you gotta advertise in the union for a full-time clerk, so that person that you just trained may get bumped by somebody, and now you lose him, you gotta retrain.
Madam President.
Counselor DeMaderis.
I do have a concern about the part-time building official position being eliminated, because, I don't know if you all recall, but the reason why we were gonna hire him is, because when Neil should be spending time in the office, dealing with plans, or whatever else that need to be done, this building official would be out giving permits, and inspecting properties, and doing what Neil spends a lot of his time doing, and we were getting numerous complaints, that Neil was never in the office. At the time of this discussion, we had a long discussion with Neil, we've had retired building officials work for us in the past, where they are retired, there's a small amount of income they can make, and they would be interested in doing this, that's where we were going at the time, but the reason why we put that in there, was because there was numerous complaints, and there was a real problem with getting things done through the building office, so that was one of the solutions, and if I remember correctly, Neil was on board with it, because he could do more office work, and be here to meet with people, and the other person would be doing the inspections, or whatever, needs to be done out in the field, and the discussion was that maybe we couldn't get anyone, but we have had part-time help in that office in the past, or at least when we didn't have a building official, we had a retired person take over in there, and there was a long, I don't think I'm imagining it, but there was a long discussion where there might be a retired building official, that may want to work part-time, and do some hours here, and this would help with the numerous complaints we were getting at the time.
Or, or the other issue is the, is the plan review, I mean, there were certain things in the building official's office that were getting really backed up, that weren't things that the clerical staff could take on. So for example, not too long ago, the state building official was nice enough to come down here, and took, I don't know how many sets of plans-
Thirty.
And took them and did plan review, because we were getting backed up, I mean, those things can't be addressed by the clerical staff, so if we leave the building official's responsibilities pretty much the same, but we don't get some help on these things, it's not gonna address that. I'm gonna go back and say that I really would like for us to consider having a workshop on this, and really try and flesh out all the options, and what we can do, and I am interested in exploring, and Paul and I have talked about this a little bit, a job that encompasses the administrative officer responsibilities, and maybe some other zoning things, but isn't a, you know, AICP-certified creative planner, somebody who does the nuts-and-bolt stuff really well, but we're not looking for, I think this is worth a little more fleshing out, rather than voting on this tonight, because there is only a finite amount of funds here, and, you know, we, we need to be really sure that we're spending them in such a way that we're addressing, you know, the problems, and I'm not comfortable that that's what we're doing right now.
Any other comments from the council?
Make a motion for, can we make a motion to have a workshop?
I, I think that we still need, I think you need to address the administrative officer, that's the biggest thing, that is not within your, your proposal. That, again, is required, we're required to have that, and I think it's critical we find a solution to that, and certainly, on-call planning and grant writing is great, but we really need an AO. So, I leave it up to you, would you prefer a workshop, or do, would you prefer to reevaluate and come back with another proposal?
Madam-
I'd like to make a motion.
Could I make a motion to have a workshop with the town administrator, so we can iron this out? So, so he has an idea what we're looking for, and we have, you know, some feedback from him, what he has.
Well, I-
Second.
Good.
Well, I think I have a good idea of what you're, you know, what you're looking for, and what you're not looking for, and we can, we can do, you know, have a, I mean, I would like to take it back, and come back, and rework the proposal. If you feel then that you want to have a workshop to discuss it, or, you know, because it would take too much time during the normal session, certainly that's fine, but I think, let me take it back and relook at it. But, you know, we're working, we're working under a very constrained budget, we're working under constrained time, and there, there, this puzzle doesn't have many moving pieces to it, and, or that we can really move, about the board, and at some point, you know, the, what I'm getting from this, the sense of the board, is that you want the planner hired, and therefore, the AO hired before the administrative clerk, or the administrative support, but ultimately, we're, might be constrained by, no one will want the job at any price, and we will spend more time not getting the position, but I'll relook at it, and it's a fairly simple effort to see if we can't find either the right job description for another planner, or the right job description for this planner-light, this combination position.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan.
I think, you're talking about the constraint in time, and I agree with that, and I'm thinking, if you go back and rewrite something, what, based on what you just said, we're still gonna want a workshop, because the workshop, at least what I heard, the workshop was to bat out different ideas, not to say, okay, what you want is the planner, that's, that's, that's part of what we're talking about, but if we can say, okay, just get a few people together, it doesn't have to be a big deal workshop, and that's what I'm thinking, it can be sooner, rather than later, if we can get it, if we can have a workshop in the next, I don't know, week, or ten days, something like that, we could, you could probably pull something together for the, for the next meeting, and having talked to everybody in the same room, then it seems to me that we can iron out stuff, and we don't have to spend all the time here, trying to iron out stuff, because I think there are solutions out there, but it's not just, if you think that it's just, well, let's just go with the planner, let's just go with that, I don't, I think that's not quite what we're saying, and I'm just thinking that it might be faster and easier if we say, okay, throw this stuff out, let's do this, and then get it done, get it done in like an hour and a half, not like a big deal. That's my, that's my idea of a workshop, you know, throw, throw the information out there, throw the ideas out there quick.
Well, I, trust me, I have no, no objection to any of your input and, and value that you, you've looked at this a lot longer than I have, and you probably have seen or heard, you know, other areas or other places that have done things, and you would know how they would apply to...
That's it. I mean, I just heard about something today that I had no idea about, and it was just in another town, hey, they do this. I was like, okay, let's talk about it. But to me, we could go on for another hour here, which I don't wanna do. I mean, rather that, I'd rather focus on something very quickly and then, you know, say, okay, that's what I'm thinking would be more, make more sense, get more information out there, get more input.
And Paul, I don't feel that we gotta hire a planner before we have to hire a clerk. We may not have a planner that, you know, have anybody that wants that. We may have to go with a clerk. But I think if we sit down and discuss it, I think we can come up with some kind of a plan.
Certainly.
Madam President?
Ms. LeVell?
If we pay, you just put the money out there. If we get together, come up with a better number, you're gonna get more applicants. People don't wanna work for nothing. And, I mean, we got plenty of money here to get a good planner. We'll discuss the other stuff when it comes about. We definitely need a planner, and we can't pay him forty thousand dollars a year. We need a planner, so I, I agree with, uh, Ms. Ryan, on we'll get something together, a little workshop, say, let's spend this amount of money, then, then we'll see who, who comes in. And maybe we can draw somebody if we pay 'em properly.
I understand.
I just have one question for the solicitor. Section 507 of the charter, would we be interfering with the day-to-day operation by having a workshop?
Madam President, wouldn't this be a policy decision that we're making right now in how we want these positions?
So... The planner reports to the town administrator. The part-time man, used clerk, would report to, through his organization, as well as any type of building official would report through the, uh, town administrator.
So the way that I've interpreted this type, we've interpreted this type of procedure before is that this is meant to prevent the council from interfering with getting a particular person appointed to prevent nepotism and that type of interference? Or contrary to that, to get someone that you don't like in particular fired? If it's a broad outline of, here's a position, now advertise and fill it, I don't think that would, uh, file a petition.
Thank you. So we have...
A motion to have a workshop.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We could...
Can we...
What'd you say?
We could set a date.
Need to set a date.
I don't know if you're whispering, but I'm still not hearing you.
Set a date.
Set a date.
Thank you.
Is your blunt...
Don't make you laugh.
Yes, no, and that makes me cough, so. We have to do that now?
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, if you could just respond directly by email and not amongst the council members to the town administrator with dates that you're available.
Right, if you, yes, send to me and the clerk, and we'll, we'll work it out, the date.
Very good. Next item, G4, Linda Lawson, Tiverton Days 2017 Overview Event Report, July 28th to the 30th, 2017. May request town approval, sponsorship for Tiverton Days 2017 Fall Celebration. Oops.
Talk slow for one minute.
Talk slow. I don't think anybody wants me to talk slow.
Talk fast. Thank you. While the reports get, get passed out, and we're, we're waiting for Councilor Baud to come back, we just wanted to give you an update of, of the event that we had the end of July, Tiverton Days, the townwide celebration. But before I do the event wrap-up or conclusion and give you an overview of that, as you're aware, nothing happens without great teamwork and, and a great committee and great people behind you. So I'd just like to recognize the folks on the planning committee. Some of them are here tonight, some of them couldn't make it. And I'm gonna actually ask them to stand, which they would never have come tonight if they knew I was gonna do that. So Deb Janik is, is at work, Phil Skyler couldn't make it, Mike Decotis is in the back of the room, Deanna Moran is with us here tonight, Barbara Pelletier, Dave Perry had a family emergency, Sally Black, Jamie Davis is at work, Elaine Pavo couldn't make it, Kelly Levecque is in the back of the room. So this was a great team of peop- and Pat Curran. Oh, no, I really have her on the list, I do. So this is the, this is the great team of people that, that really put this together. And we're very fortunate to have them all at the table, and it was a great celebration. We'd also like to thank the town council for their support, as well as the Tiverton Recreation Committee for their supporting guidance as well. But we'd like to acknowledge Chief Blakey and his men of the Tiverton Police Department for, for their support along the event. Bill Anderson and the Department of Public Works here, those guys worked incredibly hard. By the time Friday came, I think they were probably pretty happy not to see me come pull up to the garage, but those guys were great. And hats off to Chief Blakey, I'm sorry, Chief Lloyd, and Acting Chief Reimels from the Tiverton Fire Department and their team over there. Those, those guys were absolutely fabulous. Tiverton Arts Council helped us sponsor the Rock Painting and Piano Event, Tiverton Yacht Club with the Lighted Flotilla, Tiger Tree and Landscape with our, our float, Susan Anderson with the piano, Sakonet River Outfitters and Randy's guys that carried the piano and transported the piano and then moved the piano, who's now at Boogamash Park, Nana Quake Yoga Studio for the yoga, Coastal Roasters for donating all their time services and, and resources, so we're very appreciative. And we all know that without our event sponsors and donors, it wouldn't be possible. So Moran Shipping, Phil's Propane, Humphrey's Building, Sakonet River Outfitters, KP Manning, Rep. Jay Edwards, Rep. Dennis Canario, Senator Lou DePalma, Senator Wally Fieg, Senator Jim Sevigny, Jim and Barbara Pelletier, Absolute Bliss, Elaine and Gil Pavo, Patricia Curran, Jay Lambert, Peter's Excavating and Landscaping, and numerous friends at Tiverton Days that donated. We met all of our expenses and all the costs incurred. And if you can go to page nine on the report that I handed out to you, you can see a list of the items as well as their costs, and you can see where we ended up with a balance of forty-four dollars and eighteen cents. So we're in the black. So we, we, we started with fifty dollars, so we lost six bucks along the way. So my committee is gonna have to work a little... We're, we're gonna have to work a little harder next year, so. But we, we did cover all the costs associated, so it did not cost the town or the taxpayers anything. Tiverton Days 2017 was a great success for our community, and we had record attendance and participation at all events. Grinnell's Beach, we had a little over a thousand. The TPD is estimating about fifteen hundred people in attendance. The parade, seventy-six units registered, and we had seventy-four check-in. Rock and Roll Painting, we had about seventy-five children and family that participated in that. The Outdoor Movie, we had about two hundred in attendance, and a two-hundred brave souls that braved fifty-eight degree temperatures the end of July. So no one expected summer temperatures like that. Beach Yoga, fifty-three participants, and we had about a hundred and seventy-five children and family come through the Tiverton Fire Department open house. We painted, and I thought Mrs. Pelletier had lost her mind when she showed up with all the rocks, we painted a little over two-hundred and seventy rocks and one piano. So never thought, when she showed up with three hundred rocks, what we were gonna do with them other than build a little wall, but, but that went over real well. Reports from Tiverton Fire and Tiverton Police noted that all events were without incident. We attracted many to these events, not only from our community, but also from visitors, and we're hoping that they come back and visit our town at Tiverton and support our local businesses and our future events. Cleanup and trash was minimal. We had our plan in place, but people were incredibly diligent and respectful of their trash. The weather, although tentative at times, held off for us, so we had a, a lot of people preying on, on our side. Feedback was, has been great, and we've had a lot of feedback to have more of these types of events in the future. We did send out some, some feedback regarding road closures, and, and, you know, people really enjoyed knowing about that. So we will, you know, commit it into our plan next year and, and address that upfront and, and bring that forward. Our goal was to, you know, about participation was building community pride and spirit, and we think we achieved and exceeded those expectations. We'll continue to, you know, develop and build out our committee work plan. And for future events, as well as this committee, to ensure sustainability so that anyone can come along and pick this up. We will be having our, our future meetings. We've picked our date for next year, it's July 27th, 28th, and 29th of, of 2018. So we are looking for people to come and join us. All our meetings are open, and it's welcome, all are welcome to attend. And we will be coming before the committee next year to, with the hopes that the town will sponsor this event again. There is a video that we have online with a lot of pictures. Your meeting was jam-packed, we, we're not gonna show it, but I did talk to Dave Roberts with the hopes of putting it up on the town website for, for people to view. And the last page, page nine, would be the budget. So that's really the, the only recap that I wanted to provide and, and thank our committee and all involved.
I'd like to thank you and, and the committee for doing an excellent job, getting this event off and having it be so successful. Those rocks were a lot of fun.
I'd say we whoop up on Bristol's Fourth of July Parade.
Certainly, Counselor LeVell.
I, I wanna thank everybody too, but I also wanna thank the report. That's, that's great. That's always stuff, all the information is right there, and it's like, that's, that's really nice to have.
The first seven pages is detailed, and I certainly, that's for you to read in the future, the committee has. We'll put it up online if anyone wants to view. The last couple of pages is a recap, and the final page is an exact tally of, of expenses.
No, it's, it's, you can see how it took work just to do this, so I appreciate it for sure, and I'm sure everybody else does too.
I think I would just like to add, um, Linda in a positive attitude. She's amazing. Oh.
Thank you, Mrs. Pelletier. I'll have to be nice to them, though.
I think you're gonna tell us about a fall celebration?
Oh, your word done?
I, I, I spoke really quickly. But we did come off such a great success, and we had a lot of feedback from the community asking for more. So we are here in front of the, the committee as the Tiverton Days Planning Committee, looking to hold a fall event Saturday, October 7th, with the rain date being Sunday, October 8th, and that's Columbus Day weekend. We're gonna be calling it Bridging Lanterns with an oh-my-god pumpkin contest with Sam Smores. And what that really is, is, I know, creative, huh? What that really is, is we're gonna encourage people to carve their pumpkins at home. We have a farmer to donate fifty pumpkins for folks that, that wanna come and pick them up. And we plan to line the seawall down at Grinnell's and light them at night with glow sticks. So, so that's the, the bridging lanterns of it being in Stone Bridge and kinda bridging and bringing our community and our, and our visitors and, and neighbors together. The pumpkin contest, you know, is hopefully we get a, a good turnout, and that's a little bit of a, of a, of a prize if someone does spend a lot of time, you know, carving their pumpkin. And then our hope is to have fire rings at Grinnell's where we would have smores. So they'd be contained fire rings down at Grinnell's Beach, anywhere from five to six of them. We do have, like I said, the farmer to donate fifty pumpkins, we do have someone to donate the fire rings, we have someone to donate the wood, and we also have someone to donate all the ingredients for, for smores. I did meet with the Recreation Committee to review this. They have approved the use of, of Grinnell's in the area for what we wanna do. I, it'll be free, it'll be open to all. I did meet with Chief Lloyd and discuss the fire rings and the contained fires that, that we're gonna do for the smores. I discussed the event with Chief Blakey, as well as Bill Anderson from, from the DPW. So they are all aware of it. We are also asking for this to be a town-sponsored event as well, similar to the Tiverton Days July event that, that we, that we just had. So any questions that you have, I'll be more than happy to, to, you know, answer or get that information for you.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Hilton?
So first of all, congratulations to Linda and her committee on an outstanding event. And I think, you know, the upcoming fall event sounds great. But one thing, and not necessarily for a discussion or for a vote tonight, but I did have a brief discussion with Linda about this, which is that she seems to have a really great group of enthusiastic volunteers who are planning this event in the fall and to do the Tiverton Days again next summer. And I was wondering whether or not we might consider a slightly more formal relationship with this committee. I think I mentioned before, I mean, I think these are great events, and I think it's wonderful for the town to sponsor them. But I also, you know, worry a little bit that if we get into sort of sponsorship on a one-off basis, that, you know, then we'll have other group, you know, pretty soon, where do you kind of draw the line? And this group is a great group, super organized and doing a wonderful job. So I'm wondering whether we should consider some discussions with Linda and her committee as to potentially, you know, in a way that works for everybody, because we wouldn't wanna put undue expectations or responsibilities on them, of slightly more formalizing this so that it comes under the town umbrella and that, you know, the insurance is, is there and that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a little bit more formal relationship. I don't think, Linda doesn't feel too opposed to that idea, she's willing to discuss it with her committee. But maybe we could consider a way to do that, and it would, you know, kind of address the issue of, we don't really have a policy for this and, but I, I'd really like to find a way to show support for this committee going forward. So I don't know if, Peter, if you have a thought?
So one way you could do that is by either passing a resolution or ordinance, essentially creating a board within the town, which the council could appoint the members of the Tiverton Days Board as, essentially a town board. And the task of that board would be to organize these types of events. That way you'd have a more formal process set out, rather than doing it as a, a one-off basis that, and you could set out the, you know, the policies for these types of events and have more of a, you could set the expectations of them already involved.
Yeah, I, I certainly have not addressed this with the committee, as, you know, this was a recent conversation with, with Counselor Hilton. We, you know, we come together as volunteers looking to bring, you know, community, you know, build community and spirit and pride. I, I, you know, obviously we can take that back. I mean, we're not looking to formalize monthly meetings and things like that, maybe do a few events throughout the year, an ad hoc type thing where we're able just to have open meetings at the library, bring everyone to the table that's willing to, you know, wants to participate, finding a way to, you know, sponsor these types of events so that doesn't cost the town or, or the taxpayer anything. And maybe three events a year. However, we wanna be very respectful of the other committees, boards, and commissions in town as well and their events, and not step on anyone's toes, or maybe work with them on a particular event. So again, this is a committee of eleven, including myself, and, you know, kind of would have to go back, but I, you know, I guess we look for, you know, guidance from the, from the council or the administrator or the solicitor and as to how to proceed with those kinds of parameters.
Ms. DePerry?
Yes, I have a question for the solicitor. If we did that, would all the members have to fill out a, a form to be appointed to that board, like they do for our other boards?
So you could do it either as when you, like when you set up the, use a resolution to set up a board, and you name the specific appointments to that committee, which wouldn't go through the interview process. I don't think that would be appropriate in this case, since you already have the people that are involved. So I don't think you have to... I don't think you have to, um, you know, the only thing you'd have to think about if you went that route is that, uh, meetings that you had as a group would have to be under the open meetings process, which you provide the agenda to the clerk's office, they post it on the Secretary of State's website, and then anybody that wanted to attend would have the ability to attend, and, um, uh, you meet in a, a town facility, either the library or the town hall, which is handicap accessible. So that would, that would be the only requirements.
Yeah, I mean, our, our meetings are open and, you know, holding minutes. Um, you know, I mean, the ad hoc piece of it all, of coming together to work on a particular event and kind of going away and, um, bringing or presenting that proposal to you for approval, we'd still like to do, you know, and kind of keep, you know, those, you know, sense of what the community is responding, or the feedback that we've received, or if someone has an idea, and, you know, that kind of fluidity, and, I don't want to say not a lot of structure, but, um, you know, versus, you know, I, I, however that gets set up, what we would definitely want the committee to kind of act and, as it does today, um, with bringing these ideas forward. Um, and maybe there's a spring event, maybe there's not a spring event, and that's okay too, but, um...
Madam President?
Mr. LaBeau?
I got a question for Peter. What are the pros and cons of doing it through the town? Is it better for this committee to go through the town, or is it better for them to stay as they are and come this way?
So, um, you know, the, the benefits of the event for doing as a town-sponsored event, uh, for the Tiverton Days, uh, would be, um, uh, not, um, uh, paying the fee for a special event. Um, it would also be, um, they'd be on the town's insurance, so they wouldn't have to, uh, um, get their own insurance policy and fill out an indemnification agreement. Um, so that would save them some money. Um, now, as far as doing it on a, a one-off basis versus doing it, um, uh, through a, a resolution that appointed them as an official board of the town, I, I think the, the benefit would be, it would set out a poli, well, you would set out your, um, uh, you would set out expectations of what other groups would come in, you know, that way you wouldn't have someone else coming in and saying, "Well, you said they could do it, so why don't you do it for us too?" And you, you'd make it official, they're part of the town, there'd be, um, a certain charge that they would, uh, be given by the town council, so that's...
So that's all the pros. Any cons?
Cons of, uh, well, the other half is that, um, when you, uh, do it through not a town-sponsored event, uh, you essentially can force the liability off onto another entity, um, make them sign an indemnification agreement, and if something goes wrong, you get to, you know, point the finger at them and say, "Your insurance carrier should carry it." So, that, that's the, um, what you have to wait.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any, any other questions from the council?
Well, I was going to offer, if it's okay with Madam President, if, you know, if Linda wants to talk to her committee and see what they think, and, you know, let us know, and, and what, you know, we don't want to make this committee burdensome or onerous or put too many requirements on it, but sort of come back with some ideas of, then maybe we could consider, uh, um, if everybody was on the same page, a resolution to somehow more formalize the relationship and, and have an ad hoc committee or something, and let us know what you guys think.
Yeah, I mean, going back to the committee was, is, you know, our committee is something that, you know, I mean, I can't make, we have had no, absolutely no discussion around it to, you know, until today.
So, um, I have a question also. Do you want, do you have a question?
Are you...
I had a question.
Recognized by the chair, so Ms. Ryan?
I am, okay. Um, so Peter, so if they do that, then there's no, there should be no problem with the insurance, right? Or is that something we, we have to also check into?
So, uh...
As long as they're with us.
If, if it's a town event, on town property, that, that's insured.
Okay.
Any event that occurs on town property, just like the Bristol Fourth of July Parade.
Yeah, so we don't have to just, yeah, we don't have to check with them, it's, it's already in the policy.
It's a town event on...
Yeah.
But even any vendors that we brought on, we still had to complete that permit form that, with the inspections and whatever you have on file, so the vendor themselves has to provide the insurance and, you know, licensing and things.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just didn't want to have to have a problem with the insurance. But it sounds like it was, there wouldn't be one.
And if it comes back, that, uh, the committee, the, um, Tiverton Days committee decides that's the route they want to go, we'd double-check with the trust anyway, and just reach out to them and know that this is booked.
Okay.
For the record, Bristol was the second-best parade this year.
It was certainly bigger.
Well, they didn't have you, that's why.
Our committee, our committee agrees.
Um, so, does that mean that we delay sponsorship approval for the Tiverton Days 2017 Fall Celebration of Bridging Lanterns?
You don't have to, uh, you don't have to, and you could do it, um, you know, do a town sponsorship, just like you did with the last event, and then prospectively, uh, you know, they can go back and consider if that's what we want to do in the future.
I'll make a motion to that effect, to sponsor the, um, the fall, what is it called?
Bridging Lanterns with the oh-my-god pumpkin contest and sans smores.
I'll make that motion, I'll take that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor, unanimous.
Oh my God.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam, Madam President, I'd like to delay, I'd like to delay my next item. Uh, Attorney DeSisto is prepared to speak on this, and I believe he's on his way, so if you'd like to do the next two items before that, and I'll try to get in contact with him.
Very good. Next item?
Is that all right, Peter?
G6, Councilor DiMaderis requests update status on police department staffing, response by town administrator, and prior department safer grant, response by town administrator.
Thank you. Um, you have attached, uh, a letter from Chief Blakey that, uh, gives you a status of the, uh, field training for the recruits and, um, their expected completion of that program. So you can see that's September 11th, and if I'm not mistaken, that is two council meetings from today, or from this council meeting. So, uh, my intention is to come to you the next council meeting, which will be the 28th, with a recommendation. At this point, looks like we have, we have empty billets for three officers, and, uh, it'll be a recommendation for presumably three officers. That can certainly change. As you can see, there's, uh, the potential for two officers that are on staff that are looking for other positions. That could change, um, at any time, although the chief seems to feel that they'll happen more towards the end of the year than sooner.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, the, the only questions I had is, back in June, there was two officers that were supposed to be leaving. Uh, has that been confirmed? Did they leave? Or no, they have not left?
Um, I'll believe, I'll let Chief Azir, he can address that specific question of what two officers, but I, I think, if my, my recollection is, my recollection is correct, we were talking about potential retirees, not officers that would be transferring to another agency.
Oh, I thought there were two, that one was going to East Providence, and another one was going to a federal agency. That's what I thought.
That is what we're talking about.
Correct, right. So they're not retiring, they're, they're leaving to go to another department.
Okay, correct.
They're not retiring into the normal 20-year, 25-year plan.
So, did that take place? Did they leave? Pardon? Did those two leave?
They have not left yet, they're in, they're in the process of those, uh, two respective organizations.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's the ambiguity here, is, we, as, as Chief Smell says, he, sometime between now and the end of the calendar year is when they could leave.
Well, that's, that was the guesstimated or estimated point that we feel they made the pot in that, in that timeframe.
Madam President?
Ms. LaBeau?
So, what we're saying here is, three of the five, you're going to recommend we hire the other two, are, are pending on whether these other two guys take new jobs.
Yes, and, uh, the case of the last, uh, recruit, Officer Melody, she is on a delayed, um, finishing of her field training because of her injury that occurred several weeks ago, so she's probably about five weeks behind the September 11th date, so there's more time for her decision anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Update on the safer grant, please?
Safer grant, so, uh, as you're all aware, we did not receive, uh, Tiverton did not receive a award this round, but that doesn't mean that the rounds are over. They, they continue to do rounds, uh, as long as they have money. And checking with, um, Congressman Sissilini's office, uh, today, as a matter of fact, when they get back to me, that there is more money, there is more rounds, they expect the next round announcement to be sometime in September, um, and we are still in the running because we haven't received any sort of rejection notice of our application. So, that's what we know.
Very good. Any other questions from the council?
No, thank you very much.
G7, Town Solicitor, approval of post-community agreement development term between Town of Tiverton and the Twin River Tiverton LLC.
Madam President?
Ms. Ryan?
I think the solicitor was also going to address something here as well.
Right, this was the...
Waiting for Tony.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I could address it if you want to have, wait till, oh, there you go.
Here he comes.
Rolling in, right on time.
Sorry. We didn't, yeah, where did Denise go?
She went to call Tony.
Madam President, if you want to, uh, give him, the solicitor a chance to get set, I can do the, the announcements.
Okay, we'll take, um, item G7.
Yep.
Actually, are you ready for item G5, the motocross event?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay.
Good job, Peter. Peter, good job.
Okay, item G5, Councilor DiMaderis, discussion of motocross event that occurred August 6th at 691 Brayton Road. Um, I think she was waiting for...
I, I...
Okay.
I'm back.
Would you like to proceed, um, or do we wait for Councilor DiMaderis?
Could be her.
I think she's on, on her way now.
We're waiting for you. Let's go.
I was calling you.
That's what I...
All right, um, I put this on my agenda for several reasons, and, um, I want to make a point with her, I'm not pointing blame on anybody. Um, on Sunday, August, um, 6th, there was an event at the Motocross Field on Brayton Avenue. I was notified by neighbors, I'll talk about it, I was notified by neighbors on Saturday that this was advertised. I pulled up the advertisement, and it was. On Sunday morning, ah, the neighbors called me and it was going on. I, I actually went down there and witnessed the noise and the traffic. Um, at the time, the police was called. Um, you just, I apologize, Nancy was supposed to put this, these two documents in your pocket, and it was forgotten. Um, I was confused Sunday, and quite frankly, so were the neighbors, because we had discussed this at the March 13th meeting. We had a solicitor's opinion, um, we were told that this should not be going on. Um, there was actually a motion by Mr. Perry, and, and seconded by me, that these events should not occur, per solicitor's advice. It's also attached, is a letter written by, um, Mr. Johnson on April 13th, and he seems to have understood what the decision was, because he wrote, and it's the last paragraph, he, he wanted to show his willingness to work with the town and the area residents, and he wanted to share, uh, this is how he wrote it, "I want to share my thoughts on options. I'm prepared to execute if my zoning variance is granted." Now, on Sunday, that's what I thought, I thought he needed his own variance. This event went on, um, on Monday morning, I did talk to the town's, um, administrator and the solicitor, and it was still the opinion that this should not have occurred. Um, an NOV was supposed to be given to Mr. Johnson, I assume it was. It hasn't.
It has not, yet.
Why not? I was just curious.
To the best of my knowledge, it's still being crafted.
Okay, but, um, it was a solicitor's opinion that an NOV needed to be sent to Mr. Johnson. I thought it already had. Um, I'm going to let Tony take this over. Um, why, why I put this on is because these neighbors need to know if this should be going on. This is a residential area, and we discussed that in the past. Um, if you look at the ads, and I just found another one, where Mr. Johnson is, um, is charging for these events, or whoever is doing it on his land is charging for the event, and I just want to make sure that if this occurs next week or the week after, these neighbors know what should be done. Tony?
Okay, uh, you may recall, this was, uh, before the town council, the March 13th, and my, uh, opinion on the matter hasn't changed since then. Uh, there's two issues here. This is not, uh, this type of use is not permitted, uh, under the zoning ordinance. That's the first issue. The second issue is, is that, uh, a license would be required for these types of activities anyway. Uh, my advice on March 13th was to have the matter addressed at the zoning board, and I had thought, uh, from seeing the letter from Mr. Johnson, that it, it was going to happen. That has not happened. Uh, the event, uh, that we're talking about, I think from two weekends ago, was a charge, uh, was an event where there was some type of a charge, even though it was to a third party. Uh, that, uh, makes it a commercial, um, venture, and again, not permitted. So, there's two issues here, uh, that, that were not addressed. Uh, this event should not have taken place. Now, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But my, my advice doesn't, does not change from March 13th.
Mr.?
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. First off, on March 13th, um, the solicitor did advise the council not to grant me a permit, which I had requested, based on the fact that, um, he said there was a specific injunction against me and my property for motocross. This is my regulation. There was a specific injunction against me and motocross, so that this type of event should not happen. So his recommendation to the council was not to grant us a permit, so that we couldn't hold a public event. But we did hold a private event at the time. This last event was also a private event, it was a private club on private party, uh, a private event on private property. There was no meeting of the minds, there was no cash transaction, there was no lease, as, as you say, of the property. What I do, it's my right as a citizen to grant people permission to use my property unless there's a specific order against that specific activity.
Madam President?
Ms. Councilor DiMaderis?
Tony, even if, okay, this is a residential property, um, and even if he was to have the event, there are specific permits, because we permit several, we did it three times this evening, where we, we give specific permits, sound variances, event permits. This was never obtained. So, having a personal property is fine, but there's still permits that you need to obtain. Also, are you, I am looking at a website right now, it's Rider Planet USA. Are you MX691? That's what you call yourself, your business?
That's what we go by, yeah.
And, and...
And not a business, no, club.
All right, so, um, features are that you're public. Um, it says, right here, that you charge nothing for parking, nothing for entry, but riding is $25 per rider, and $10 for small track. So to me, if it looks like a duck, and it quacks like a duck, it is a duck, and it looks like you're running a business on this property...
I did not write that article, I did not post that, I don't know where it comes from, or, that is not interpreted by me.
No, no, it's on.
Look, I'm sorry?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. Um, but, but it's on here, it's on here... But it's on here, it's on here, and...
I don't have any control on who posts articles on Rider Planet.
This isn't an article, this is about your business. It's all about your business.
It's not a business, and if anyone contacts me about information on 691 and they ask if they can ride at 691, I tell them specifically, it's a club, it's donations only. If you come in and you want to ride, you abide by the rules. You fill out the paperwork, you sign the waiver. If you want to donate, you donate. No one stands on your feet and tells you you have to donate. This is not a business, there's no meeting of the minds, there is no business transaction. If a private club comes to me and wants to use my property, and I allow them to use my property without any cash transactions, that's my prerogative.
Tony?
Okay, actually, could I just say something? I'm sorry. I disagree with that. See, basically, you can say that, all right, but people are using this and money's changing hands. Under the ordinance, that's a business. That's why my, excuse me, that's why my advice is a notice of violation should issue on this. Now, my advice was, if you wanted to do this, you'd take care of the zoning. We got a letter from you on April 3rd that said you were going to do it. Now, it's a different story. I understand what you're going to say.
No, you're completely wrong.
Please let me finish. There's advertisements for this, and I understand you say you don't have any control of that. You do.
I don't, I didn't edit them.
You do, you do. And I have to say that my advice on this is consistent and will not change. This type of activity is not allowed under two different ordinances. There's a way for this to be permitted, but that hadn't happened here. Notice of violations have to go, so...
Madam Chair, my application request for executive advisory committee has been sitting on the planner's desk since April. There's multiple copies of my master plan that's been sitting on the planner's desk since April. Unfortunately, the town has lost its planner and has a new planner, so that kind of got pushed to the wayside. There is an application that is started for the zoning board, which I get good feedback from Councilman Perry about approaching the zoning and asking for a variance, which is all applicable. We tried to do this the correct way, protocol, come and ask permission to host an event on our property under your advice, and I can tell you this, because I did the research. You stood before this council, you said you did the research, and there was an injunction against, specifically against me, and that was your advice to the council not to issue the permit. Then, when I did my research the next day, I found out that not only did you did the research, you were the counselor that filed a motion of appearance, because you knew a lot more than this. You knew a lot more. And you knew that it had passed off the docket, so when you stood before the council and you told them that there was an injunction against me, you knew there was no injunction because you filed a motion of appearance, you read the case file like I did, and you misled the council, so I did not obtain a permit.
I just have to respond. I didn't say that. And by the way, consistently, you're putting words in my mouth. This is what I did say. This case was ReLU Realty, okay? And the case is CA number NC 2009 0663. I was not the attorney for the town. It was Andy Tights.
You filed a motion of appearance, did not...
Hold on. Among other things, the town sought to enjoy the use of the property as a campground and motocross facility. Case is unresolved since defendants filed a suggestion of bankruptcy on the, on May 2010, okay? And what I said was, we're not aware of any use of the property that's happened since that time? The case lies dormant. You're, I gotta, I have to be honest with you. You're saying things that I said that I never did, and it's not in the minutes. So, please, I understand where you're coming from, but don't put words in my mouth.
Madam President?
Mr. LeBeau?
If Mr. Johnson wants to have people on his property with no money, changing hands, without that website, he should be able to do whatever he wants. It's his property. If he wants to have people driving motorcycles, drive motorcycles. He's not running the business. If he's running the business, then we go after him because he's running the business. I mean, where's this going to stop? You can't have a cookout in your yard, you can't have your friends over? Denise, let me finish. If Mr. Johnson's not doing the proper thing, that's one thing. But, you know, we can't say, no, he can't do this, or no, he can't do that. He has a couple of hundred acres over there, he can do pretty much anything he wants. Not, I'm not saying he can run a business. I'm just saying that, I'm saying if he wants to invite me over there to go hunting, rifle shooting, dirt bike riding, and as long as he's not running a business, we have to honor his property. Otherwise, we can't have a cookout, we can't have friends over our own houses, because this is going to set a precedence that's not good. If he does the wrong thing, then we go after him. But we've got to make sure he's doing the wrong thing. We can't assume it.
Actually, it's the reverse, because I'm going to tell you, you've got a house, it's residential, you can have your cookout. I'm not saying that, okay? This is a residential zone. You can just take a look at it, there's internet, he's got the advertisements for this, they're saying this is the fee. There's ordinances for this. Hold on. See, there is things he can do with this property. It's a residential zone. Anything you can do in a residential zone, he can do. It's not a commercial zone. So, my point is, is then why even have zoning? If you're going to let people do whatever they want, just get rid of the zoning ordinance and then everybody can do. Houston has that, but not here. There's zones here. This is a residential zone, it's an R80 residential zone.
Okay, so there's no more cookouts in Tiverton? You can't have a cookout on a residential zone?
You can have a, you can have a cookout, that's fine, because that's a residential use.
Okay, so can you have a cookout and have your friends bring their motorcycles because you've got plenty of land?
Well...
I want a straight answer, I want a yes or no answer, because now we're going to get into this a little bit.
Here's my point, I'm going to give you a straight answer. There was something there this weekend, okay?
Yeah, but I want...
It was asked two weekends ago, that was advertised for a fee. So, that's what I'm going on, I'll go on hypotheticals.
Okay, but I understand what's there, I just asked one simple question. Can Ray, Ray, can Ray invite people to his house with motorcycles to ride them on his property on a Saturday or a Sunday?
Depends.
Well, why does it depend? Then why can't...
We've got a whole ordinance on this.
Listen, I'm not asking about a business.
Throw the ordinances out.
But I'm not asking you about a business, I'm asking you about Ray inviting me to his house with my motorcycle to ride on a Saturday to have a cookout.
Assuming it isn't a business.
Assuming it isn't a business.
We can't assume because it's advertised as...
Okay, but we're putting that in the closet. I want to put that in the closet.
Look at, look at section 51...
Tony, can I have a yes or no answer? I don't care about any of that stuff.
Here's the thing, and this is something I always object to, all right? When a question is asked, it's always yes or no. There's no yes or no answers. Here's the answer. If you look at the ordinance, there's two types, there's commercial and there's non-commercial. Either one, he's got to get some type of a permit for that.
Okay, and I agree to everything. I agree that there should be a set of rules...
When it becomes a business, Ray.
No.
No, because there's a non-commercial entity in here too.
I agree that there needs to be a set of rules.
We've got a structure for this. And what I'm worried about is, if you're going to start making exceptions here, then just throw the ordinance out. That's my point.
Okay.
So, you're asking the lawyer what the ordinances say.
I didn't ask you what the ordinance says, I know what it says.
Commercial and non-commercial.
I know what the ordinance says, that's not what I'm asking. I know what the ordinance says.
Madam President.
I'm asking if Ray can invite people to his house to ride motorcycles in a residential zone with 200 acres or whatever it is he has, not having an event...
Under 51-212B, needs a non-commercial, a non-commercial entity needs to obtain a license to that.
Okay, so he can get a license, so, but the license is available for him to get.
Correct, if he asks, which he didn't, by the way. So, there's two violations. It'd be a violation of this and the zoning violation because money was changing hands.
But I'm not, you keep backing up over that to where there's money changing hands. I'm asking you a straight out question.
And he's answered it.
No, he hasn't. He beat around the bush. Yes.
He asked...
You need a license.
Madam President.
Even in that, you need a license.
We have to stop this.
But you're beating around the bush, Tony. I know, maybe he did have an event over there.
Randy, you're out of order.
Please.
Denise, I'm not out of order yet, but I'm going to be.
Well, then go ahead and be.
I'm going to be in about a minute.
Mr. LeBeau?
Yes, madam?
Done?
No, I'm not done yet.
I have a question for the solicitor.
No, I want to speak, please. This is a council thing, it's not an open... I want to read, everybody, what was advertised. Ocean State Short Course, 691 Brayton Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island, Sunday, August 6th, 2017. Heat number one, minis, and then it describes the different vehicles, $35. Heat number two, class C, $45. Heat number three, um, class, class B, $45. Gate fee is $10 per car. Sign-up starts at 7:30 a.m. What does this sound like to you?
I understand all that, that's...
Sounds like a private club.
I understand all that, that's not the question I asked them. I didn't ask about that.
But you're going off the topic. The topic is if these people see, if something happens next weekend, what is their recourse? What is this town going to do to stop this? Because this is an event that should not be going on, as the solicitor just said. And these neighbors need somebody to help here. They need a solution.
So does Ray. He's a taxpayer too.
So...
I have one question, please. Councilor DiMederos, you did, you were out there on Sunday, you were back and forth across. I see you on surveillance camera, you spent an hour and a half with the police doing your sound testing. Did I violate any ordinances with sound or noise or...
Well, first of all, you didn't see me on and off. You saw me there at 10 o'clock and I was talking with the neighbors. The police came over to the neighbors and spoke, and I was there with them. I did know...
No, I saw you cross the street onto my property.
I didn't go on your property at all.
You did, you were on a surveillance camera.
I went at the tip of your driveway to...
You were on surveillance camera.
Well, fine, your surveillance, but this isn't the point, okay? This is not the point. You're being difficult right now. This is not the point. I was there at 10 o'clock with the neighbors.
Am I a taxpayer?
I drove by.
Am I a citizen?
Joan, I'm not going to deal with this.
Am I a taxpayer, am I a citizen? Do you acknowledge me as a taxpayer or a citizen?
I do.
Then why would you go to my neighbor and listen to a complaint and not approach me on my property?
Because I didn't want to go on your property, you just said I wasn't allowed there. These neighbors called me, and they are, they are people that I answer to, just like I answered you.
These neighbors have been harassing me with false allegations for the past two years. Mrs. Sturgis stood here before the council and brought up a pocket-gavagin report with false allegations. I was taught that when somebody comes at you with untruth, you ignore it because it's not worth putting the effort into it.
Wait, wait, wait.
Well, he's speaking, he's addressing me, and I just want to say one thing. This is not what this was meant to be. This was not to be a pissing contest between you and I. This was meant to be...
You made it that, you made it personal!
Wait, wait, wait. Wait, wait. So, we know that there's an issue. We've been through this before. We have two different sets of opinions, and the resolution to this, again, we said that there was a couple of options, that you need to go to get relief through zoning while you reply for a non-commercial permit.
Yes.
So, from our perspective, that's what you need to do, okay? If you and your lawyers disagree with that, then certainly make it known to the administration, town administrator, and the town solicitor, okay? If you have in fact had plans available and have started the process with planning of the zoning official, then certainly you need to let the town administrator know that.
Because he's new.
Because he's new, and he's got to get up to speed on this. You know, he's getting, getting whacked here and he has limited...
I know, you're administrator, the planner, they all went out at the same time. This was submitted in April. I've tried to get an input, I've even tried to make amends with my neighbors. I'm approachable, I'm accessible. They can approach me. No one does. They make false allegations without approaching me.
Well, be that as it may, there has to be a path for you to follow, and the path is through the town administrator and the town solicitor. You have to go that way. So, you can't, that's the way you have to go.
Free ride days from now on until we get a permit.
Madam...
Well, that can't happen either.
Why can't it?
Tony?
And if, in fact, the, when the town administrator gathers all the information and the evidence, he may in fact issue a notice of violation for the past event, correct? So, we will give him an opportunity to get that accomplished, to do the research with the town solicitor to get that done.
Can I also ask the town solicitor one more question? And it's a zoning question. Per Tiverton zoning, it says specifically, recreation, open recreation, in an R80 zone, big P for permissible, parks are permissible. My proposal is for a park, a rider-driver educational training facility, a park. Are parks permissible in an R80 zone, or is this ordinance going to be changed?
I don't consider it to be a park.
You don't consider me to be a park?
No, I don't, no.
Okay.
And you know, that's greatly a saying it.
And what designates a park?
Stop for just a second, the planner's right behind you, I want to ask a question. Was an application filed?
Yeah, I wanted to come here because I wanted to take exception. I've been there since mid-April, early May, and Mark, I don't recall Mark Russo ever telling me about any application, anything submitted. I've gone through the office quite thoroughly, I've seen old files, I will look again, I will look through emails, but I have not seen any active file. And in addition to the licensing, I just wanted to point out that I don't know it by heart. But this would fall under outdoor recreation, which I would guess is either a not permitted use or a special use permit, but by either right, it would have to go before the zoning board of review for relief. So, I would put this in the classification of outdoor recreation, whether they're charging or not charging.
Well, actually, that, what I'm referencing is section 51-21 of the, of the town code, which is that, that type of recreation. So, not, no matter what, this is what needs to be done. I've made the, made what I said had to do, it's the same thing I said on March 13th, actually. I'm not saying anything different now than I did then, so that's where we're at.
I tried. There's a stack of forms, there's a stack of...
Madam President.
No one can, no one can...
No, it's not, not, not an open forum on this one.
So, Tony, my major, my major question and why this is, this was brought up, if next week this occurs again, what is the resolution to this next week? Next week, if there's another motocross event going on on that property, what should the town do about that?
Well, without any licensing, at the very least. If it's a commercial thing, it's a zoning violation. But if it isn't, under section 51-212B, and there's no license for that that's been issued by the town council, it has to be shut down.
Thank you, that's what I wanted.
Is there anything scheduled?
By the way, that was my advice on March 13th.
I don't see anything, but...
How much notice for a request for a permit, for, like I came before, a special event permit? That's what I came to this council for the last time. How much notice is required?
You need to get on council agenda.
You need council agenda for the 28th, you have to have it submitted by 2:00 p.m. on August 22nd.
So, it's a month, it's like any other application, there's a month of...
No, it's the Tuesday before the council meeting.
Okay.
All agenda requests have to be submitted by 2:00 p.m. before the council meeting. So, if you're going, you want to be on August 28th, then you have to submit something by August 22nd.
And, and, Madam President, may I ask the town solicitor a question?
Proceed.
Just to be clear on this, my understanding is that if you're applying as a non-commercial entity for a special event permit, that it's limited to two per year, and beyond that, you're considered a commercial activity, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, there's, there's two non-commercial events per year that can happen on a property, and after that, it's considered commercial.
That's correct, yes.
So, it's not an unlimited number of special event permits?
How about non-commercial fundraisers? What is that considered? Is that a permitting bar?
It's the same thing, you're all on the...
And it's only a maximum of two per year.
Of two per year on a property, after which point it's considered a commercial activity. May I ask one more question? It might, I would like a little bit of clarification. Is the notice of violation, is there a continued investigation before this goes out, or is this a matter of timing or review, or, where are we on this?
The notice of violation is in draft based on the events of last, or two Sundays ago, ago, and it's between, and honestly, I'm not sure where it is, but it's between the building officers, the code enforcement officer, and the solicitor's office. And if you don't have it, then it's not, it's still here in town hall.
Okay. But, but once the language is approved, it will be delivered?
Yes.
Madam President, the notice of violation that will be issued, will there be a fine attached to that, or just a cease and desist?
It's a fine, it's a...
It's a cease and desist.
Thank you.
For the first offense?
Yes.
After the first offense, is there a fine?
Yes.
How much?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. Make it up as you go.
All right. Any more questions? No? Okay. You know what you need to do.
I need to file for variance.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Next item. Next item, G7, town solicitor, approval of host community agreement development term between Town of Tiverton and Twin River Tiverton LLC.
This, this matter was continued from the last meeting. I had some questions as to the fees that would be charged on the, on the fire inspection, and that is on... Number nine. Now, there's some issues. Is the chief Lloyd here?
Yes, he is.
Uh, there, there's some issues as to the fire inspection fee. The initial calculation under the, under the state statute came out to about $350,000. And that's something that Twin River had objected to. They had their own different calculations on this. There's two things that are going on. This first is there's a state statute, and then the question is, is how the fee is calculated under the state statute. And then the second question is, is whether or not that fee is appropriate under Rhode Island case law that basically states that the, any inspection fee should match the cost to the community, the municipality, for that inspection. Based upon discussions that I had with Mr. Russo as well as the town administrator and Chief Lloyd, and I know that Mr. Russo spoke to his clients about that, as you can see, under Section 9, that there's kind of a graduated fee here. $100,000 in subsection B. There will be another $50,000 for excess out-of-pocket reimbursement. And then in D, a payment of $150,000 in 24 equal monthly installments after the operation is all set forth. That money would go to the general fund, and it would be reduced if there was any, in fact, excess out-of-pocket reimbursement. And that's the graduated amount. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Russo would, too.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan?
So, I, I guess, I want to know why that D, $150,000 in 24-month equal installments, why is that under the fire code review inspection? It would seem to be completely different, but I'm not sure why. I'm also not sure, is this the revenue that we're talking about from the, from the casino? Because it's like, because then you would say, what are you going to pay $150,000 for?
Well, you know...
I don't know what this is about.
One, one of the difficulties that we're struggling with here is that because this is such a large development.
Yeah.
And a unique development, and it'll be a first time for the fire department in their inspections, there's difficulty, and I, I don't think I can, and I know the chief is here, we really don't know how much this is going to take in terms of man-hours for the inspections, which is why there's a bit of a free flow here. I defer to the chief on that, and then I'll address, after he speaks, your, your specific question, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
We adopted in our ordinance the state fire code, which sets forth a fee schedule based upon overall project cost for plan review and inspection. Not only do we just review the plans, but as the project goes along, our inspectors have to go out and verify and certify that things are operational. Based upon a dollar amount that was put out by Twin Rivers in their previous discussions, we based a figure off of what they were saying, a $75 million project. We don't look just at buildings such as, the building inspector's office looks, looks a little different. We have to look at the overall thing because there's the access, there's the water, there's all those other parts of it. That's where the fee came out. The 350 that I was looking at was basically the fee based upon the plan review structure. Having a discussion with Mr. DeSisto, that there is apparently some case laws, things, that's beyond me. I can't waive a fee. I can't change, make any changes to that. That's all based upon what the council decides to do. But the dollar amount for all those fees, the 250 total, is basically, would be plan review fees, which go into the town.
Wait a minute. 350 total?
250,000 is what your discussion is.
Oh.
350 is what I was looking at, but based upon...
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah.
The case that was brought to me.
May I ask the chief a question?
Proceed.
Chief, you don't, as you're sitting here tonight, you really don't know how much this is going to cost, do you?
No, I don't. I have a rough idea of the hours that we believe are going to be involved, but that's not involving any setbacks or any other problems and such, so...
And it's because it's first and unique?
Yeah, very much so. I think we have the expertise absolutely to do it. It's a matter of timeframe to know how that works, and, again, working with, trying to work with their construction schedule that they're discussing.
The only difficulty you have with D is that it's really not keyed to any, the first two, B and C, are keyed to inspections.
Yeah.
The difficulty with D is we're trying to work around the state statutes. It's not really keyed to true inspection amounts.
It's, yeah, I think it's also, when we already have a problem, you know about the revenue, where the revenue is going, right, from the casino. And then it's like, then we've got another, $150,000 in 24 installments. That's a lot of money. And that, that's going to be, I, I just can't imagine, I can just see like a gazillion inspectors running around all over the place, and I still don't think you would come up with $150,000 per month. And I think, what am I missing here?
That's not per month.
That's for the...
In 24 equal months.
Yeah, that's 24 payments.
150 divided by, although, the remaining dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you're right about that. Okay, that's good. That's, that's helpful.
Madam President?
It would have been better, but I'm like, this, this is crazy.
I'd like to see Mark pay that, but, Madam President.
One at a time. Are you done?
No. I still don't, okay, that, I, I take that. That's very good. But I still, it, it also sounds like a pie in the sky kind of thing. And is there any way, I mean, is this a pie in the sky thing? Because that's what it sounds like to me.
I have to admit, I am not, I understand the $100,000. I understand the $50,000, you know, sort of excess payment. What exactly does the $150,000 that's being paid at, paid to us in 24 equal monthly installments, what exactly does that cover? What is that paying for? That's the part I don't understand.
Madam President, I think his, it's a dollar number. Let's just take the dollars out of this for a minute. Anytime somebody comes to us with a, a plan to have reviewed by the fire department, they're charged a fee. There's a residential home, there's a duplex home, there are commercial properties. Mr. LeBeau built a shooting range. He was charged a fee based upon his plans and the cost of the project. All those monies go into the general fund. They come into the town. That's revenue that we charge for the services we provide. In this case, what they're offering to do is try to offset some of our costs, because I'm, I'm taking an inspector and totally putting him on this project to help meet their deadline. The remainder of it, the 250, if that's the number we want, 250 total, that's for the town. That's, that's a town income. It's, this separate from gaming revenue, separate from everything else. That's their construction cost to do it, just as if they're paying the third party with Four Leaf who has a man on site for the building inspector's office to do their inspections. Solicitor, am I correct?
Yes, this is a, this was an attempt, I think, to try and fit whatever payments there are into the state statute, which is admittedly a little, little, little bit excessive on this. But D is not, not really going to be tied to fees as far as I could see, I mean, inspections as I can see.
What's it going to be tied to?
It's, this is just an agreement with, with Twin River. That's what it is.
So, this is like, goodness, the, the hard money? Like, I don't...
It's still, it's still this...
I mean, I'd like to understand what this is for. Not that we don't need the money around here, we do, but I don't understand.
I don't want to, I don't want to put either Chief Lloyd or myself on the spot. The plain fact of the matter was, there was a calculation made for this, and this was actually an attempt to try and fit, fit in what the, the town would get for fees on this. This is unlike the Four Leaf situation, where it's going to be, it's measurable, you know, you're going to be paying somebody to come in. This is different because this is going to be handled by the Tiverton Fire Department. I understand the chief's reluctance to make any agreements that would deviate from the state statute as he does those calculations.
Madam President.
Ms. LeBeau?
Chief, can I ask, talk to the chief?
You can ask a question. What's your question?
Chief, how you doing?
I'm good.
All right. Now, all this money, all these monies that you see here, they're, they're pretty excessive. Do you think that that's enough, or do you think it's too much? And did Twin River agree to these mon, numbers?
Those numbers that you have on that community host agreement are work between the solicitors and Mr. Russo from, which, input from myself to Mr. DeSisto.
So, basically, Twin River agreed to pay this?
That's what's in the agreement. That's...
Still, I can't get a straight answer today.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
They did, yes.
All right, so...
But it wouldn't be in there if they hadn't agreed to it. That's, that's my point.
Well, we don't know that. Now we know that. Now that we know they agreed to pay this, is that enough? And your opinion?
I believe it is.
Okay, good. Then we're good. Thank you. Thank you.
So, so what, what is enough? Is the $100,000 enough with a $50,000 contingency?
I believe so.
So, the extra 150 is like a bribe?
No, I wouldn't say it's a bribe. It's, they're paying...
It looks like a bribe.
When you look at an overall, it's such a, it's such a big calculation to make based upon a dollar figure for the project. That's the number. I came up, when it's so much per thousand that is charged under the fee structure that we have adopted. They're asking for a change, just like when the church came in, a minimal came in and they asked for a variance on their plan review fees.
Yeah.
We calculated what their plan review fees. You have the authority to waive that or to change that as. I can't do that because the ordinance says this is what we charge. So, this is an agreement that you're working on.
Who wants to go first?
Don't I still have the floor?
No.
You canceled me?
You had your question answered.
I'm done. Not okay. It's okay if I'm done. You probably got the same.
May I ask the chief a question? Chief, can you ballpark me what the fire, what we pay the fire marshal? It's our fire marshal that's going to do these inspections.
Correct.
Himself.
His, his annual salary is $65,000.
Okay, and he'll be the, he'll be the person up there doing these inspections?
He will do it, and then, on some of his positions, I'm going to be backfilling so that he can specifically spend time on this project to meet a deadline.
Okay. So, if his salary is 60, what did we say?
65.
$65,000 a year. If, if he was up there all day, every day, right, and then you had to have a backup fire marshal, and you multiply those numbers, you're talking $130,000, right? Yes, no?
Counsel, you put me in a, in a difficult, on what's, discussion with the solicitor, it kind of...
I mean, I'm just trying to like, figure out what this might cost us. Like, so, so the, so that's my question. So, so if you had a full-time fire marshal up there inspecting all day, every day, and then you needed another fire marshal to do all the other fire marshal stuff, do you foresee needing more resources than that?
No.
Like, would you need to bring somebody from Providence or from another?
No, I do have different fire marshals that have different avenues. There's one that's specifically working on the sprinkler system. There's another one that's working on the fire alarm system, and then the overall project itself.
So, there, so, wait a second, now, I'm confused. So, you have more than one person...
That are certified by the state to be able to sign off on these projects.
Which work for us.
That work for us. We're paying, that work for us.
So, you don't believe that you'll need outside resources?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to understand the question. My concern is, are you telling me that the fire marshal's going to be there every day for eight hours working?
No.
No. And he makes $65,000 a year. So, he's not going to be there every day working. So, this seems, I mean, I hate to say...
You, counsel, you, you, you can do whatever you wish with this fee structure. My job was to bring to you a total dollar amount. My total dollar amount I calculated was 350,000. Wherever you wish to run it off of that, that's...
Based on what?
Based upon the dollar figure for the project. A $75 million project, based upon the free fee structure that we have adopted, is $350,000.
And then we reduced it to $100,000 plus.
The, the issue here is, and I, please, the, the chief did what he was supposed to do under the statute, and that comes out to a figure that I think, you know, you pretty much see that it's, it's way high. This was an attempt with ourselves and Twin River to kind of navigate through that, but as you can see, it's even going to be a little bit more money than you probably need on this, and I'm concerned about that Rhode Island Builders Association case. However, this would be by agreement. I can't answer the council president's comment on that. You've raised good points. But I just, so you know, this isn't something that the chief just came up with. It was by the statute. There were some objections. You know, we had actually some lengthy discussions on this.
Madam President, is it possible we can speak to this, or rather, not?
Proceed.
I just want to make a couple of points. We have a building permit plan review. We have a fire plan review. Under your building permit fee schedule that you have here in town, you make accommodations for a large project because your fee schedule recognizes that it may not cost that much. And state law says your review should roughly equal the cost. So, under the building permit side, we, we had that ability to work with Mr. Hall, and that's in here. We, we pay the Four Leaf, and then Mr. Hall's going to have his mechanical people do inspections. We have to pay that, and then maybe other costs. And if there's a dispute, the administrator's going to referee it. That's how that structure is set up. On the fire side, unfortunately for us, unfortunately for the chief, there is only one cookbook, and that's you do this formula, and it really does, it never took into account a project like ours and the dollars that we're talking about. So, the chief did his calculation the way he did it, and he did it properly. And, but, by the way, I mean, every time he asks Fire Marshal Mello to hustle and expedite a review, they do it. So, they're, they're doing their thing. The law says they're to roughly equate to the cost. We don't know what the cost is going to be. So, we tried to come up with some type of formula. I mean, if, if you decide what we've come up with makes sense, we'll abide by it. If you decide, no, it should be equate to the cost, and you think it should be something different, we'll escrow the money, and we can do that as well. We'll do whatever you want to do. But I, I just want to be heard because I don't, none of the parties here that tried to put something together that works with the existing law, I don't think, did anything wrong. We're just trying to work with the law as it's written, and it's not written for this type of project.
So, to recap, if you go by the formula, it says $350,000. But if you go by case law with the Rhode Island Builders Association, it should basically equal how much effort you put into it.
Roughly.
Roughly. And I, I can't even, I, I don't know how we would justify $350,000 if we're, even if we had the inspector full-time, even if we had two fire marshals on the job, eight hours a day for a year. I, I don't see us justifying $350,000. So, I can, I can see...
I think, I think that one of the reasons for that is... I think that one of the reasons for that is, is like he said, the fire marshal's doing his regular inspections, and then something comes up that they need done right away, he's going off his regular inspections to do that for them, to expedite it. So, that's why they're paying this amount to try to get things moving quicker or quickly. That's what I think.
Can't we just escrow to 350 and give them back the change?
Why not?
Why can't we do that? Escrow $350,000 as they spend it?
No, no, no.
Well, I'm just trying. Whatever the number is.
Ms. Hilton?
Well, actually, to Randy's point, though, not escrow 350, because then it would be over.
Yeah, well, whatever the number was.
But what if, and I mean, I can't believe I'm saying this, given our fiscal thing, but to be fair, what if we, what if we instead upped the escrowed amount, right, in case things get expensive, or in case we have to get extra help or something? What if we just upped the $50,000 escrow account in case we need it, and do it that way? And up that by some amount, and then what?
We have $100,000 under B.
Get rid of D, get rid of D, and then if we don't need it, we would give it back to Twin Rivers.
Or put it on black.
Or put it on black.
Put it on black. No, no gaming here. Okay, so what would you propose for an amount on C?
I mean, I'm just saying.
Is that something that's reasonable? It sounds reasonable to me.
Sounds reasonable to me.
It just seems so shady. It's just like he's just throwing all this money at, and it's just like...
How about, how about 100 and 100?
100.
Keep B the way it is, make C 100, delete D.
And then, and then if we, if they don't need...
Because 100 would be, that's a fire marshal with Bennys, so that's about 100,000.
Madam President, I have just one minute to talk to the solicitor. For a second, please.
Okay.
I want to make sure we're on the same page.
That could also be a problem.
Hello?
Hi, I'm Clara Custney. I have a brief comment. I can't believe that our town councilors are thinking that we're paying Twin River too much.
I don't think it's, we're paying them too much. They might be paying us too much. And if they... Again, the calculation, it sounded to me like if the calculation was done, it would be 350,000. But we have case law that says you can't really charge more than what you have expensed, because then you're price gouging, for lack of a better term.
No, that's a good term.
Or a legal term. But it sounds like there's case law that has already been in place that we can't do that. So, we're looking to cover our costs, so that the town recoups any monies associated with these inspections. Okay, so, that's... So, any change after that brief discussion?
No.
Okay. So, it sounds, to me, it's reasonable if you take 100,000, that's one fire marshal. If there's another 100,000 contingency, basically it's contingency, if you go over the 100, that's a second fire marshal with Bennys.
There's another half of the fire marshal, more than half.
So, I can...
Okay, so, madam president, so, there was one other thing, then. So, if there's any of the extra money, is it, looks like that would go, because it looks like, the D would say it was going to the general fund. But if we cross that off, and there's any extra money, it's going to the fire department?
No. What I proposed was B would stay the same. C would be amended to delete $50,000 and make that $100,000. D would be eliminated. C is an escrow account, which would be used in the event that the $100,000 was not enough to cover the expenses in that. And then if there's money left over, that would go back to Twin River.
Okay. So, I'm going to make an assumption that all of the time that the fire marshal is reviewing plans, doing his job on Twin Rivers' plans or property or whatever, you're going to keep track of that time, and monitor that, and basically produce a bill, and then that will first take out of the 100K, and then if it goes beyond 100,000, it goes to 9C with the 10,000 contingency.
There's actually an accepted formula for this. I will forward that to the chief, so he can account for it. I'll also let Twin River know what that formula is, and it springs from the Builders Association case.
Any other questions from the council? Actually, I think the motion is to approve the host community agreement.
With an amendment?
With the, with that amendment from, in 9C, to change it from 50,000 to 100,000, and to eliminate 9D. Okay, any, any other questions from the council? So, approve the host community agreement with, between the Town of Tivitan and Twin River Tivitan, with the amendment to 9C to change the amount from 50,000 to 100,000, and then to eliminate 9D, as in David, altogether.
Eliminate 9D altogether?
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. No bids and requests for proposals. Next item is town administrator announcements.
Yes, thank you. First announcement is, just for your information, that the, that police have purchased a number of tasers out of the Burn JAG grant, total of $8,379. No approval required for that, but just for your information. Secondly, the Tivitan Fire Department will be doing their fill-the-fooled campaign, again for your information.
There's three dates?
Three dates. Saturday, the 19th, Saturday, the 26th, and then Saturday, the 2nd, is Labor Day weekend. 9/2, yeah. And then, thirdly, there's no backup, just a verbal from me, on the five-year plan and grant analysis that we started with the departments. So, on the five-year plan, I've met with most, all departments have provided some sort of an input, met with most of those departments to go over that input, and then given them back, feedback to come to a standardized format, and prepare that for final delivery to the council. I'm certainly, I'm positive this will do this in September, it's not going to happen in August with vacation schedules. Grant analysis, again, where we stand with that is, gotten inputs from most of the departments. It's now in a standard format. What I need to do is sit down with the treasurer and catch the other grants here and there that you've seen in, in the audit reports, so we have a complete tally of everything, and just bounce it off, anything that was doubled. And should have that in early September as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Any council announcements? Councilor announcements? C, we have, oh, the Tivitan Senior Center quilting for charity volunteers are holding their annual quilt show and sale, Saturday, August 26th, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. On display and for purchase will be beautiful handmade quilts, handbags, placemats, pillowcases, and much, much more. It's located at the Senior Center, 207 Canaanus Street in Tivitan, and all proceeds go to the Star Kids Scholarship Program. It's a great program, and they do great work. And I usually buy, I usually buy bags. They do a great job. So, everybody, August 26th at the Senior Center. Anyone else? Nope. Town clerk items and announcements? And Ms. Black?
Black liaison from the school committee to the town council, I just want you all to know, the parking lot has been done at the middle school. If you'd like to reach through and see what a good job the taxpayers' dollars have done, the craters are gone.
Yes.
Thank you.